Let's call this meeting to an end. Everyone check in, please. But I wanted to tell you right away is Oshkosh is not here tonight. They've got school board, they've got council, and they've got us. They've got us all filled up, ready to go. They're not here, it's not working, so we're gonna have to take things off from our Zoom and that and record it from there. So just so everyone knows right away that we're not beyond here tonight. So everyone should be signed in, so let's have the pledge allegiance. Supervisor Powers.
Thank you. As a chair, I've been asked to say a prayer for the dedication on the death of retired county board member Claude Thompson. And God will be humble, the feast here a sheep of their own food, a lamb of their own flock, a sin of their own redeeming. We send him into the arms of your mercy, into the rest of the rest of everlasting peace, in the glorious company of the source of light. Amen. And now the dedication, oh great Creator, you have filled the world with beauty. Guide all who govern in local, state, or national interest, that we may be a people at peace among ourselves, and a beacon of integrity to other nations. As members of the county board, give us courage, wisdom, and foresight to provide for the needs of all our people. Amen.
Before we have tonight's adoption of agenda, being chairman, I would like to go ahead. And the first thing on the resolution, and that I would like to move Resolution number 175, and then 194 right after, that's the bailiffs, and that's because we have the judge that presides over them. He'll be here, and then 194 is all the capital improvements, rather than having that at the end. So everybody's not sleeping from that to talk about it. I just need to get them out of the way. So that'll be 175 and then 194. The motion for the approval of tonight's agenda. Motion made and signed it. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Supposedly nay. This time, I'd like to ask Judge Jorgensen to go and serve Julie as official clerk here, so she can actually do all this work that she's been doing. Congratulations. Thank you, Judge. At this time, anyone in the audience may come forward and come to the mic and speak on anything that pertains to Winnebago County, whether it be on the agenda or not. There was a two-minute time limit for you, so please remember that when you're speaking. State your name and address, please.
Well, I was in 1807 Brighton Beach Road, Fox Crossing, Supervisor District Four. I would like to hereby submit to the county clerk a resolution to be forwarded to the facilities management committee to name the main conference room within the proposed David Abric administration building, the Susan Edner Conference Room.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to the board this evening? Anyone else? State your name and address, please.
All right, good evening, everybody. My name's John Jorgensen. I'm a citizen of Oshkosh. A judge here in Winnebago County. And I'm speaking as to the bailiff's pay, and I know I'm premature. I saw the agenda, and I picked up my daughter in about an hour, and I just don't know if I'll be here for that. So I just want to express my support for the pay increase for bailiffs. They provide a very valuable service for the court system and really a bargain deal for what they do for us. They had a raise in over thirteen years, and it's time. It's a weird compensation setup, and maybe if you have further questions, Ted, I'm just gonna be sitting around and explain to you if you have questions at a later date. On time, but the judges all unanimously support this raise, and we ask that you go through as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to the board this evening? Anyone else wishing to speak to the board this evening? Anyone else? Not seeing anyone else, we'll call it portion closed. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, didn't see that. Kathy Bauer.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Kathy.
Okay, thank you. Hi, my name is Kathy Bauer. I reside at 709 Lincoln Street in Manasha in District One. I would like to comment on the UWO Fox Cities project, as I am a supporter. From a decision-maker perspective, I see the following. This beautiful area offers great schools from K through 12, which includes a university starting point. Higher education costs are soaring, while UW-Fox Cities successfully offers much lower cost with highly rated results. UW-Fox Cities offers the Barlow Planetarium, the Weiss Museum, Perry Hall, all of which are revenue generators. Fox Cities is a conduit to UW-Plattville Engineering Department, where a major Wisconsin employer recruits engineers. And lastly, the US economy is shifting, and Wisconsin is either going to be left behind or potentially at the forefront. To keep Wisconsin at the forefront, good educational decisions must be made now. But now I would like to share how UW-Fox City has benefited my own family. Many times, decision-makers don't have access to the trickle-down effects of their decisions. So when my grandchildren were young, I took them to the Barlow Planetarium and the Weiss Center. And little did I know that these trips were the genesis of work-life goals. One grandchild is now an aerospace engineer working in Plattville, and the other is pursuing a forensic anthropology career path. Amazingly, the aerospace engineer will tell you that the Barlow Planetarium and the Weiss Center were the conduits that planted the seeds. The future forensic anthropologist will state that the Weiss Center, along with the Manasha Police Department, were educational seeds. And lastly, as a retiree, I will be signing up for classes over there in the very near future. The knowledge that I don't have to drive to Green Bay or Oshkosh is an attractive option for retirees. So I hope that my representative supports this, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Kristen Lewis.
Hi, my name is Kirsten Lewis. I live at 1032 Grove Street in Manasha. I would also like to speak on the issue of the UWO Fox Cities branch. And I just wanted to speak a little bit about the fact that it is so incredibly important to have affordable secondary, post-secondary education in the area. I'm actually a student. I'm actually sitting in the building right now. So I'm currently going to this school. I think it's fantastic that we have someplace so close to home. And it's, even though it is a UW-Oshkosh school, it is more affordable than the Ashgosh campus. I also think it is incredibly important that we attract talent here in the area. We have these young people here, and without this school, they may choose to leave, which is going to severely damage the economy and local atmosphere. So I would just like to state that I would be in huge support of updating both the dining services and the union area of the school, as it has not changed in decades. So I'd just like to state that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, not having anyone on, we thank you all, and we'll continue on. Communication, petition, memorials, comments, commendations, etc.
First, I would like to thank everyone for your support. It means a lot to me, and I will do my best to make you proud. I have a long list for you tonight. I have two notices of claims, one from Kristi Moore for damage to vehicle caused by Winnebago County snow power, and one from Wyman Potter for damage to vehicle caused by a county highway department vehicle. Both of those will be referred to the personal finance committee. We have two zoning petitions, both will be referred to the planning and zoning department. 001 is from Divine Jury Home Buyers LLC, Town of Winney County, to resign from R1 to R2. And 002 for Jamie Gregory Fuller and James and Patricia Fuller, Town of River River, to resign from A2R1 to A2R1. We have a resolution from the city of Manasha to support facilities improvements at UW-Fox Cities. That'll be referred to the legislative committee. And then a number of resolutions from other counties that are all been referred to the legislative committee. Forest County, Resolution Number 020223, requesting the city of Wisconsin review and revise the entry level compensation rate for assistant district attorneys. Green County, a resolution requesting state to revise the current real estate transfer fees revenue sharing formula. Kenosha County, a resolution to request the state of Wisconsin to revise the current real estate transfer fees revenue sharing formula. Shawnee County, to request the state of Wisconsin to review and revise the entry level compensation rate for assistant district attorneys. Fershamboy County, Resolution Number 22, requesting the state of Wisconsin review and revise the compensation rate for entry level and experienced assistant district attorneys. And we have a number of commendations tonight. The first one is for Tim Lauren. Tim Lauren started his journey with Winnebago County in December of 1991 as an activity specialist at Parkview Health Center, later becoming a lead activity specialist. Tim is an essential asset to the activity department of Parkview for many years. He has supported the residents, families, and staff in too many ways to count. His playful and playful attitude brightened everyone's day. Tim has gone above and beyond during his years of service with the county and with Parkview. He was truly here for our residents, and that was evident by dedication and passion he displayed every day. After 31 years with the county, Tim retired January 9th, 2023. Tim will be continuing his passion for music through a different opportunity. We all wish Tim the best in his retirement. Commendation for Robert Messerschmidt. Bob Messerschmidt began his career with Winnebago County as a janitor watchman in 1996. He was promoted to a Class II operator in 1997, then in 1998 promoted to Class III operator and assigned as a school operator for the paving crew. In 2002, he became a greater operator and was responsible for prepping many county and town road paving projects. Bob was extremely dedicated and a hard worker. He excelled at every task he was given for the highway department. With over 26 years of county service, Bob retired from the highway department on February 3rd, 2023. He plans to enjoy his retirement and spending time with family and friends cruising the high seas. Please join me in expressing our best wishes as our blue eyes enjoy his retirement. Commendation for Barbara Effort Story. Barbara Effort Story began her career with Winnebago County Human Services, working in the Child Protection Unit for seven years. She finished her career in the Office of Family Court Services as a mediator, custody evaluator, serving 21 years in that role. Barb was dedicated to helping families and children in both of the positions. She focused on educating parents and challenged them to find ways to work better together, so their children have brighter and safer futures. Barb enjoyed providing outreach within the community and partnered with local agencies to give county-based clients connections in an effort to support them long-term. Barb was a valued team member in each office, always ready to brainstorm on difficult cases or to provide support to coworkers. We appreciate Barb's unwavering commitment to the service of others over her 30 years with Winnebago County, and wish her well in her future endeavors. Commendation for Teresa Paulus. Teresa Paulus started working for the Winnebago County Health Department in 1990. As a role of public health nurses evolved over the last three decades, so did Teresa's work. She loved the direct care of working with clients and embraced the importance of working with the community to prevent disease and injury. Teresa took on many public health campaigns such as organ donation, mental health awareness, and suicide prevention. She led the work to form a child death review team in 2010, a coalition that still needs today to review cases and advise our county towards a safer environment for children. Teresa served on multiple councils at the state and national level regarding child safety. Most recently, she worked for the Wisconsin Legislative Committee to draft a proposal, standardizing death certificates for the state of Wisconsin. Teresa's legacy will continue to impact our work as she enjoys a well-earned retirement. Commendation for Terry Van Dellen Roush. District Attorney's Office Victim Witness Coordinator, Terry Van Dellen Roush, retired in January 2023 after 40 years of service to Winnebago County. Terry navigated victim rights from infancy decades ago to the implementation of the constitutional amendment, Marcy's Law, in 2020. The role of the victim witness coordinator is a delicate one, requiring the interests and concerns of victims, prosecutors, the courts, and advocacy groups. Terry kept a reasonable and low profile, but her retirement gathering was held at the Orme King Building her last week of employment, perhaps in spite of her wishes. Commendation for Carl Landersandon. Carl Landersandon retired on January 13th, 2023 after 34 years. He started with Winnebago County Human Services on December 19, 1988, as a delinquency child protection and community options program worker. He wore a lot of hats in the beginning. In 1992, Carl moved to a substitute care position. In 1999, with the reorganization of the agency, Carl accepted the corrections and layoffs on the position. When Carl initially started in this position, he supported Winnebago County youth by placing corrections and upon his return to the community. Throughout the years, the number of Winnebago County youth placed in corrections went down dramatically. Carl moved to a youth justice social worker in 2010. Carl has supported many youth and families in his time with Winnebago County Human Services. We appreciate his work and dedication for 34 years. He will be missed. Commendation for Kelly Hale. Kelly Hale started at working at Parkview Hospital in June of 1990 and retired on February 8th, 2023, after nearly 33 years of dedicated service. Kelly was an employer, but truly knew the difference within Parkview. She was dedicated to helping residents with her supervisory knowledge and with her excellent home care program. Kelly always maintained her professionalism and had an active role of process improvement. There are so many things to be said for Kelly's hard work ethic. She routinely would work long hours to ensure the facility maintained a high level of service and care. Kelly served Winnebago County and Parkview residents with pride. Though I might be another like her, we wish Kelly well in her retirement and thank her for all her moneyless dedication. Thank you. You will be missed. And that's it.
Thank you. What's from committees, commissions, and boards?
Supervisor Bender. I'd just like to say that I went to the MECO convention, and I had went to a financial pension seminar, and one of the presenters there actually was from the, uh, commission that helped write that book. And in the presentation, he said you could take the $10 million. So then when I went to the questions and answers, I asked him, I said, if we had $52 million in losses, is it possible that we could take our whole $33 million? And he said, yes, that is true and correct. We can take the $33 million as revenue loss. And then I talked to another one on broadband, and he said that the state is actually giving credit for the money from the federal government, and he wouldn't do it on broadband. The state should have the plan up by the end of July. And we should look to see what the state is gonna do before we start spending money on any broadband. Sound like is pretty expensive. It's like $600 for the equipment and over $110 a month for the monthly fee. So he says, wait till the end of July, see what the state plan is, and then move forward from there. So if you'd like to mention, we're having very good energy in the future of the term.
Thank you. Supervisor Rousher.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to bring the board's attention that Winnebago County 4-H Leaders Association pizza sale is going on now. It's that time of year. That's when we get together and make 12-inch pizzas, fresh 12-inch pizzas for $7. You can order them online, winnebago4hleaders-square, or it's probably on the website there. Or you can call it Extension Office 902321970, but I thank you in advance for your support for the 4-H.
Supervisor Hens. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just an update on the Sourdough Creek Fed Plane Mapping that I mentioned a few meetings back. We're having problems getting all the people together to get here for these. So March probably isn't going to be happening as far as us bringing that back. For those of you who don't know that I'm part of that, which is pretty much everybody who was elected in this last election, just before COVID, there was a Fed plane mapping coming through from FEMA that was, that had gone through the area, and it was approved by the city, and only key to the county. This body had sent it back to committee, and then COVID hit, and it kind of fell through the cracks. And what I'm trying to do now is trying to get us back up to speed, because there was a last rung on this ladder that has to take action on this. And that's why I'm trying to make sure that we get enough people here to get enough information, because we have so many of us who weren't here when that came through. That's the way we're gonna be moving for April. I can't say that for sure. We have a lot of stuff on the agenda. We have to try to make this work out, because the presentation is not going to be a short one. We want to make sure everybody understands what's going on with it. But right now, let's get this, get this here in hopefully sometime in April, so we can get an action taken by this body here. But I know next month, we're gonna be discussing it as far as the planning committee, planning zoning committee, and moving forward from that meeting. So just want to give a heads up that I'm not forgetting that, but it's not probably gonna come next month. It'll probably end up being in April. Thank you.
Supervisor Deppin. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I hope everyone received my report regarding my MECO legislative conference report. And one minor correction, I saw that I typed that we met at 9:00 PM. We actually met at 9:00 AM. If we met at 9:00 PM, there would be no one on that committee. Thank you. Supervisor Powers.
Thank you, Sir Sherman. I just want you to know, I have two copies of 192 and none of 194, so we're discussing it. Supervisor Pond and I were sort of neck and neck. Most of those, we're not, we're not, we're just sharing a piece of paper. Thank you.
Okay, I see no other lights. So next will be approval of proceedings from January 3rd and January 17th, 2023. Most made and signed at any discussion. Any discussion? Any discussion? Not hearing any all in favor signify by saying aye. Say nay. Carrie, county executive report.
Thank you, Chairman Egan. First, I'll start off by thanking your highway department. Mother Nature has threw a lot at them the last few weeks, and I think they did a fantastic job with their railways and our bridges between, there's snow and potential ice and shedding. I think they often get criticized, and I want to take the time to really thank them for the work that they did and the hours that they put in, making sure that everybody can get homes safe to their families. So thank you to everyone from the highway department. A lot of people covered NACO. NACO is a great event. We found that a lot of resources for the county that are available for us. The question is, do we have the capacity or the manpower to do that for it? We heard about money still from the feds and for ARPA. We had learned about the Fisher Reduction Act. We learned about transportation and infrastructure acts. There are a lot of things out there that's gonna be really hard for us to define, but we're gonna do the best that we can to make sure we're doing our job. We'll try to grab on what is our money anyway, and then get back into our community. One of the things that we talk about is there may be money from the Department of Transportation to actually put a planner or engineer in our highway department. So since that, we're gonna keep an eye on, so we can maximize our efforts here. WCA was sitting at our conference this morning, and I had two supervisors, but thank you for your attendance. The big talk going on at WCA is Sheriff Redmore. The talks are not bad. There is negotiation. I will give you my thoughts that I'm optimistic that we will get somewhere on Sheriff Redmore. And it's gonna come to this working together, and I can tell you that behind the scenes, there are. Behind the scenes, I registered in our governor's office, and staff are talking, and we are working things out. And I'm hopeful that we will get to somewhere that's gonna help some best for the future. Today, I want to talk a little bit about the capital improvement plan. This is a historic night for Winnebago County. So first time in recent history that we're actually attempting to adopt a capital improvement plan. Next year, it was I hope that we move this into the budget process. The benefits of adopting a capital improvement plan is it gives our facilities and our directors time to actually go out for bids before contractors are jam-packed with work to do. So I really applaud everyone's willingness to look at this process to adopt the capital improvement plan, where we're just having the staff driving up. And again, I'm not saying that negatively about how we've done with the past, but I think this is gonna give us some tourists who go after some of those early bids and hopefully then some of those price downs, because as we know, as contractors fill up, the prices go up as well. I want to talk a little bit about UW-Fox Cities campus. Martin Rudd is asking that the cafeteria project be pulled tonight. And I wanted to talk to you a little bit about that. Number one, he wanted to have more time to give you more information about the project in itself. Number two, he wanted to let the engineering go, so we can have a truer cost of what this, this may cost us, instead of just an estimate of the cost of what it's going to be. And number three, he was aware that we are in talks with a minimum of understanding with UW-Fox Cities campus. And I want to tell you, we've had one of those meetings. It was very positive. He was not competitive at all. Everybody agrees that this is a 53-year-old agreement, and that we need to revisit it. Some of the numbers in there are very old numbers that don't actually account for today's inflation. And those talks are positive, and I am cheerful that at the end of this, we'll come out with an agreement that's gonna last us the next 50 years. And I think Martin was kindness of that, too. He wanted to make sure that we come out of that with a strong MOU going forward, and making sure that we're firing that MOU in some existence. We had some concerns that we weren't exactly keeping up to the contract that exists. But you know, those conversations, they've been productive, and they're willing to listen, very attentive. And we still intend to get up to the board of regents for further discussion on the future of two-year campuses. Speaking for myself, there's a little bias to it. Back in 1999, UW-Rod Fox Cities Campus accepted a young John Dama as a student. But at the time, UW-Rod would not accept a young John Dama as a student, so it was very important. So it was very important, believe it or not, the supervisors out there, they accepted me. We have to remember is this is a great tool in our county for people that may not be able to afford to fund your tuition costs. It's a great tool in the county for those that, that may not be able to fund the system. So just remember some of the benefits that we do have over there. And, and then Martin comes back to, to give a formal presentation. I hope you ask some good questions. And hopefully we can guide them on this project and other projects to see when we're in the future. And that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Questions? If not, you have an opinion. No questions?
No questions.
Supervisor Norton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Since April is coming up and it's National Convention, have you any suggestions that I want to have teams that can help accelerate or educate and inform the public of what the county government does? I'm sure we can, I'm sure we'll put a screen of, of posts on our county government page. And that's, that's definitely communication is something on the forefront that we have been working on, trying to get a, trying to get better at. Okay, and the second question, I watched the last afternoon, last shadow. First of all, I didn't know that's kind of about two ways to consume proposals. I didn't know that. And second, how does a nonprofit submit a proposal to get some funding? Did I, did anyone contact you? I did tell, this, was that a record contract to you? But how does a nonprofit solicit funds for a program? First, I would say we have not accepted any proposals yet. Those are then a public comment, which anyone can do. Anyone can, can come to that commissioner and do a public comment. The reset's been, been going really well. We had some of our staff from health department, Heidi Keating and Ashley Ramel. And Doug Gere came to help kind of facilitate the session, how we can look forward to doing some kind of block funding, if you will, to set up our priorities. How are we going to set up our priorities? What is important to us to increase resilience in Winnebago County? When we get that process down, we make it very clear on how people can, can apply for that. Very satisfied with how the, the reset has, has been going. And if anybody has not watched the ARPA commission, I urge you, please, to get on and watch that meeting. It was very, very informative.
Supervisor Hanson. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. County Executive, you mentioned that the U W A agreement will be ripped out again. If the parameters are such, would we be able to include Calumet County as one of the, along with Aragami and Winnebago? Because a good share of Appleton is in Calumet County. And although I, I don't have the statistics of how many students come from Calumet County. My suspicion is we're sufficiently remembered that they ought to be part of the expenditures.
I can tell you the county did come up in the discussions whether or not to come in. So there's another, another, I guess, thing to deal with when that comes. But, but no, I don't, I don't believe that, that we have reached out to Calumet to see if we want to get into the partnership. I guess that's the best I can answer your question right now.
Just to keep that with the forefront of that, if we're looking at redoing agreements. Take a look at that too, please.
Yeah, and, and to start in the right title of the agreement is U W A Green Bay with Fox Cities Campus. So clearly this is an outdated M O U that, that needs to be refreshed.
Supervisor Hanson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Daniel, thank you for, and also Mr. Norton. Thank you about the address on the ARPA. I was approached by some people over the weekend after the meeting about please be cautious on putting forward monies from ARPA on a nonprofit. On the appearance of how that goes and auditing process, et cetera. And just leave it at that for now. And you mentioned on resolution one ninety four, is that going to then be a formal amendment as that comes forward? To pull the, that project off of one ninety four?
And first of all, let me address your, your question. Just a refresher for everybody about the commission does not have any authority to spend. Just to recommend projects to come forward to this board. So any final decision will come to this board for final approval. So there will be some extra ever center and then actually it would be very cautious with, with how we move forward with nonprofits.
Right, one of the concerns was if you're entertaining nonprofits, that might slow down other projects. So if those are coming forward, please put those that are not nonprofits forward as quick as possible.
Yep, I agree with that. As far as amendments, that's, that's something I believe there's, there's one that will be considered tonight. I just wanted to give the update from, from Martin. And, and I'm sure you will do what you need to do with that information.
Thank you. Supervisor Juan.
County Executive, you mentioned that with regard to U W A Fox Cities Campus and the M O U agreement. That the executive will be designing a meeting with the board of regents. And my question is. Why do you feel that's necessary? And then do you have a timeline for, or have you established that time for meeting that?
Well, I feel that's necessary above and beyond the M O U that we're discussing. I think the executive from final act of rational county and, and other county ministers have some things to express. Want to make sure that, that we know that there's a solid plan in place for the UW system. Not just the two year campus, the four year campuses. I mean, there's some issues that we had to deal with. But actually we want to make sure that, that the board of regents is going to legislators and asking them to invest as well. If, if the registration, if legislators aren't willing to invest in, in the UW system, it can't just be on, on counties to hold the burden. So we want to make sure that, that they're going to do their part to go after the funding they need and that we have some good collaboration and partnerships. Because none of us can say that on our own. And of course, with reach and center, that, that gave some people some, some concern. You know, when they shut down a two year campus. And I'll be enough, and try not to pontificate here, but one of the worst things for UW system has been the economy. Because it was, it's really been going well. I mean, I went to school and you can go and get a job for twenty six dollars an hour that we may not even need degrees for. That being said, there are a lot of greater models right now that point, point to a recession. And I hope that doesn't happen. But if that did, there's going to be plenty of people looking to go further degrees and, and education. So I, I kind of hope that that is not how we solve the issue that we figure out another way. But I just want to make sure that there's beyond our M O U, that there's a good partnership of the whole UW system in general.
Okay, so you, you believe that this goes beyond just the, um. The authority given to the chancellor in this matter.
Correct.
I think with the M O U, you believe that the regions need to become involved because it's a larger issue. It's a statewide issue that we need to resolve rather than, and with a legislature rather than just without two counties or three counties.
But the chancellor has, has been granted a certain deal with the M O U. And that is the short term goal. So us to make sure that contract is solid and mutually beneficial and that they're following expectations on that. And they're following the expectations on that. The future of the two year system as a whole, that is a larger conversation that some of us executives and other county ministers want to get together with the board of regents to discuss what is the plan.
Okay, but in terms of how it affects UW Fox Cities Campus and the kitchen and common area upgrade. Do you believe that the decision making process regarding that could be dealt with locally related to the M O U? And that the engineering study could then be released for continuation concurrent with those negotiations? So that the process isn't held up unnecessarily while the, a larger, a larger discussion that would be, you know, related to the regents and the rest of the state. Because the trustees have held up, that continue to hold up the, the kitchen, the engineering study, the way approved at, at the county level here in Aragami County. And so, you know, we need some direction in terms of when we can release that. So, you know, an efficient process can continue with regard to this information that we need to provide for that there.
I, I think we're on track. The engineering hasn't done yet.
And we can't do it because it's been held up by the trustees.
The engineering was approved, the funding of that was approved. But this, but we haven't, that's been held up with the trustee rather.
It's been held up because the fear, at least for Aragami County, is that, you know, that the M O U needs to be dealt with first. My question is cannot be dealt with by the chancellor rather than the regents. So we can get this engineering study released and continued.
I, I don't know if I can answer. I'm not sure if I could answer that. I, I understand the cause. I mean, they're asking for twenty six percent of what we bond for in a year, ten million. That's, I mean, that's a big chunk. And as well as a challenger brought up some good points, he brought that up in the last board meeting. So we want to make sure that we're getting it right.
So we need to have the engineering standard.
Right.
Engineering done to know that we're getting it right.
Sure.
And that's being held up. And my question is cannot be dealt with at the, you know, between the chancellor and the counties rather than the regents and the counties at that level. So that we can release this engineering study to complete.
It is already appropriated by both boards. So that'll be between me and, and Executive Nelson and Aragami County. And I'm sure administrative, we, we will get that engineering done.
Okay, thank you. You're on.
Thank you, Supervisor Jackson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Executive Daniel, for your report. So I attended the majority of the ARPA committee, the, the meeting there. It was very informative. Some of the things that I heard were from the health department, lots of notes taken. They encouraged us to strategize best use of funding, what is our end goal? And I, I really appreciated our supervisor, our supervisors and what they had to share. And I heard a recurring theme, I guess maybe it's because I, I support it, which would be, you know, really focusing on the municipalities, townships. That, that this should be for the entire community. And, and I, I think he's a banker, he was on the, on the committee. He, he said that this would be about two hundred dollars per one hundred seventy thousand, you know, for all of the people in the area. At the end, the health officer said, you know, what are your, what are your, what are the things that you agree with or what are the things you disagree with? And I guess, based on what I, I heard, I, I think giving money back to taxpayers and, and focusing on the municipalities is an important thing. You know, our infrastructure to support homeless and, you know, I, I guess it was, so I guess my question to you was. Why was the health department asking the board of, of the committee what their high level goals are? I kind of felt that that was manipulative or controlling.
I, I guess so that we, we tried very careful, we were trying to be very careful not to do that. I think we and Chairman Egan are both co-chairs of that committee. And then we were very clear that they're just to facilitate how that commission comes up with priorities. Not for them to give us priorities, not for them to direct us on what our priorities are. But I would facilitate that. Whether you agree with some of the things the head department does or not, they are really good at facilitating someone's meetings and facilitating how you kind of prioritize. And that's, that's what we wanted to use them for. How, how do you give us a little bit more staffing to get us more organized so we can be more clear to the community and what we want to focus on? What are, what are the things that are really going to help our community out to, to kind of give us a little bit more focus? So it wasn't just shooting from the hip. I don't know if that answers your question or not. But we're, we're very cognizant of, of making sure that we are the ones there making those decisions and recommending to this for board. Great projects that are going to help our people.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Gavin.
I'll make this quick, John, which is, you are neutral for me. The engineering study. So we always drag our feet. And whatever we do with anything to do with facilities. So we've approved the funding and now it's snagged up. So I'm going to piggyback on Supervisor Swan. If we had that study, we wouldn't have to have all these conversations. So I don't understand why we can't move forward with that. And I don't know that you've answered that question for me personally. But when people ask me, are we sure we're spending three million? Is it going to be six million? Have you done one, you know, some? Of course not, because we just don't. So it's concerning to me. Number two, nonprofits. How does a nonprofit? Who helped us set prior apply to the ARPA committee or to whoever they have to? I don't want to miss one in particular, but they may not really can apply for this. So I need to know how that goes down so that there isn't a cookie little group of nonprofits that may already be getting something from us. And, and I don't think this nonprofit would need a lot, but they should be in the picture. So how, how do I let them know what to do?
Sure. Your first question, how do the engineer get held up? I think the engineer got held up from the Aragami side. Some of the, the board of trustees were, were concerned. So that was not held up on our end. And, and Mike, I, I believe that's correct, right? Can I speak out of turn? So not really sure, but it does need both of us to, to, for, for that to work. I know that's probably didn't answer your question, but it's the best that I have.
Looking at thirty days, sixty days, ninety days.
Whatever you go. Again, it'll have to be a conversation between Executive Nelson and the C F R, if they're able. Well, I think actually tonight's going to have to long. And as far as the nonprofits, I'm not sure yet. It depends on whatever the, the process we decide to come up with. And whether, you know, we list some priorities and maybe a nonprofit can, that goal fits the priorities. Maybe, maybe they apply it for a portion of whatever we set aside for that goal.
Do they send a letter now saying that they are interested or wait for some feedback?
I mean, we need to see what the, the commission sets up as priorities.
Okay. And then the third thing is, don't forget about the towns and the little cities and the villages. Because at one time, they remember floating around to possibly get each community. I'll call it a stick and then the app and that is. So those are our taxpayers, those are our voters. So don't forget about the little guys out there that are running worship.
I can tell you towns and villages and the little cities are a hot topic at WCA to ensure revenue. We understand how hard it is for a volunteer fire department or a town to fit a fire truck. That is, that is on the top of minds of everybody out there. E M, EMS or E M T, you know, those are real communities that really are that, that first call. They usually have the pages on a church. You know, I know those people. So through us and through the state, I think everybody is, is aware of that and, and it's very top of mind.
Because you used to live in a township, so I know you live in that city now, but don't forget about us that way because we are chance here.
Right.
Thank you very much.
Supervisor Bender.
The trustees, Aragami County, will basically turn not to me and say, engineering and design study until the M O U is, is complete. It wouldn't hardly be good negotiation. We're going to spend three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, whatever, they don't want to meet the conditions that we want. But they're not going to pay for the cap to. Aragami County is not going to fund it if you don't give it to me right away. So why would they pay you to pay me fifty thousand dollars with this engineering study? And then Chancellor Leonard sees we spent that money. So more directly, if he doesn't give us what we want, we'll still do the cafeteria. They're not going to do the cafeteria, they're not going to do the engineering study until the M O U is written. So the sooner we can get that, the sooner we can maybe move this project forward. I agree with him. I agree with him. I, I agree with supervisor Swender. But even if I'm going to go, it's more than two to two, that's fair. But I believe, you know, if we're going to move this forward, it has to be a good free negotiations between the three entities. We have to get an M O U that we're all happy with. Cause these things in there that I brought up several years ago, probably thirty years ago, that we paid for, we shouldn't be paying for. And I would like to get them straightened out. And if they work with us and we give them agreement, I say moving forward. Because then it's like, why have we spent three hundred and fifty thousand dollars? If they don't come up with a good M O U, how do we know the county's not going to fund the cafeteria? So then we got a plan sitting on a shelf with no money. So I think it's wise then to do this step first and then move it forward. Another six months might cost us a little bit extra inflation. But if we do go into recession, contractors might be looking for it, might be cheaper. You know, if you read about it, you don't know how the economy is going to back. But I can tell you, if there's a recession, things will be cheaper.
Supervisor Nichols.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think we can do both. We can walk and chew gum at the same time. There is a memorandum of understanding in place. And, um, the process of updating it should not stop work that's already in progress. Um, in, in listening to supervisor Swan, I think what he was asking for um, is a clarification on timeline and the process. Because what you're describing is two different things. A memorandum of understanding and working with the board of regions. So can you offer some clarification on the timeline uh, for negotiating this M O U of understand, this M O U? And then clarification on the process for the other part.
Sure. And, and to be clear, I think it's two separate things. I think it's the board of regions. I think it's the M O U and I think it's the project. Uh, but it seems that the project is being held up for the negotiations of the M O U. Um, and I think that is a decision of the board of agents overall. I would question the authority about that. The money was appropriated. Um, so I guess at first, uh, the exec, executive Nelson, I discussed and we think that there's good faith going forward that I, that we could get work in on that engineering. Cause I'd like to know, I'd like to see some other options for them. Um, but because of the two county situation, I, I don't have a clear timeline for you. I wish I, I wish I did. Um, and I'm, I'm sorry for the answer.
Is that something that you can look into and bring back?
Something I could look with, I could look Nelson on and see if we can come up with a agreement, absolutely.
I just think if the funding has already been allocated for the engineering study and we need the engineering study to make, uh, an informed decision about the, the, the improvement project. And so going forward with the study, while we're in, while we are, uh, negotiating the memorandum of understanding, like I said, I don't see why we can't do both. So if, if you could work for some clarification on the timeline, because I would hate for this to be drawn out and drawn out. And then suddenly we find ourselves in a situation where we, um, are, are in danger of losing our tour campus because of our actions or inaction. Um, and that is, um, not a place where we want to be as Winnebago County. And it's not a place that the city of Manassia wants to be either.
Yo, I would tell you that I'm confident we will not lose the tour campus. And I'm confident the M O U of negotiations will be a speedy process. Um, they are very willing to be at the table. Um, I think it's going to be a very quick process where we, we rational. I'll get back to you on timeline as soon as I will. I'll send that, I'll email with an update to the four county boards as, as I get information in.
Thank you.
Okay. So what I just want, second time.
Great. Just quickly, I agree with, with supervisor Bender, supervisor Nick, as I said, my, my line of questioning really is to, um, not allow this process to be held up and unnecessary lengthy wait for response from a board of regions when operational authorities have been given the chancellor rather to deal with us at the level of it. That's the most important point I'm trying to make here. There's, you know, chancellor rather has this authority. We can negotiate with them, get the, get what needs to be done, you know, to, to move forward engineering project and on this, you know, with Fox Cities Kitchen and County area. And let's do it locally. And we can also deal with the board of regions issue as well. But, but why, why, you know, why do I have to hold this up when, when you can already do it with the?
No, I agree. And, and again, I believe those are separate issues. So I don't think the board of regions issue will hold any of this up. Uh, seems to me that the engineering and the M O U are connected. Um, the, at the last meeting, the chancellor said he expects us to have an agreement pretty quick. It's not going to take us long to go through that. And so, yep, uh, you've been doing this, now you haven't been doing this. Um, I don't want to get into the details, but those are two separate issues. So if you, if I was sure. Your appointment. Thank you. Thank you after the discussion. Um, for the board of health, I'd like to applaud supervisor, supervisor Josh Palmer of Roschach. She'll term explain July first of twenty twenty-four. Most men second approved. I don't think they would signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Does the person say nay? Carrie. Thank you all. I have a few things tonight in being that we're just talking about, um, got a letter here from Manassia saying that, uh, yes, Manassia. It's true to resolve the mayor and, and common council of the city of Manassia requests Winnebago County, already gave me county fund, fund the food service and student union project and the twenty twenty-three capital improvement plans, recognizing this respective role and surrounding our state and local economy and keeping in new W O Fox Cities campus via an assessable choice in the Fox Cities region. Good. So the resolve that this resolution be sent to Winnebago County Executive and Board Chair, already gave me county executive and board chair and Winnebago County Board of Supervisors. So I don't know if you all got it or if you read it, but, uh, all the different ones are signed down here. All the altemans, all the mayors and all that. So I wanted to make sure if you didn't get it. It's, uh, better a little bit linkier than that, but, um, I wanted to make sure that you asked about that. Second thing I wanted to show you is, um, this here is something to do with the whole county. We're, if you're honest, we're fortunate enough. But in, in our township, Towne Restford, we were granted this, um, we got to be, we was maker of the year. Uh, it's sometimes nice, but this time I don't say it'd be as great, but it was over about, it's called City Community of Three Sex Offender Place of Residence. Well, here is this place that they were going to put that sex offender in Towne Restford. It's an eleven church. And that's where they were going to put him, right on the main grade. There was a eighty-some-year-old lady there that was so frightened. She didn't know if she was going to get a gun. There were some people there that had kids just down across the road. They, they weren't within the fifteen hundred feet, but they're across the road. So it didn't matter. There were some people that had grandchildren right next door. So, but that didn't matter because they weren't attached and the kids weren't there all the time. So this was going to be, but thank goodness, uh, thanks to county executive, the sheriff, uh, Mary Ann. There was a lot of them that was involved in this in our township, showed up at all the hearings and all this and that. Yeah. And we fought this really hard. And thank goodness we got it resolved. This is a beautiful place now. It's all green and this and that. It's made into a beautiful family home. It's got an upstairs in it and everything now. And so this is where we could have had a, a sex offender there. So, um, and this person wasn't from our township. That's sort of, there is none from any of the towns, uh, sex offenders. So if you have any coming in or whatever, uh, I also consider as right and fight for it and, and hope for the best. I can't promise you that, uh, um, I, I think if you talk to the right ones, you'll be finding out there'll be more coming out. So who knows where they're going to be, but, um, so just go ahead and remember this is sort of the county. It doesn't just, our township is lucky enough to give it, but it was for the county that actually got it all and that's, that deserved. I don't know how many of you know that we're going to have another retirement coming up, which is going to be a big one. Um, Mary Krieger is leading us. Um, Mary had worked for Winnebago County for over thirty-three years, starting on January twenty-sixth nineteen ninety as an account clerk, number one in the treasurer's office. On May twenty-fifth nineteen ninety-three, Mary was promoted to deputy treasurer. On April twenty-sixth, two thousand, Mary became Winnebago County treasurer. And Mary's last day in office here will be on April third, twenty twenty-three. So we'll be losing another one. Um, I'm not sure that all will be done for her now. I'm sure it won't be a big party or whatever like we had for Sue. Cause Sue worked directly for us. Not that Mary wasn't as important or whatever, but Sue worked directly for the county board. So, uh, but if you get to see Mary, go ahead and thank her for all her service. Appointed another person here that's, um, um, she had been uh, financial associate in Winnebago County's treasurer's office, processing tax payments, department deposits, checking scans, use valuable charges, customer service, payment plans, taxes, lottery and gaming, credit audits, and assist the foreclosure process. So she's been with us since twenty fourteen till, um, present. Her name is Amber Hoppa. So I'd like to have a motion for the approval of Amber Hoppa. Is there a second? I heard this, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Does the person say nay? Thank you. Should be a good, good replacement, I'm sure. And we'll be losing another good one. Um, we have a lot to go, so I'm not going to talk anymore tonight. Um, there's a great question that you all had for the county executives. I'm afraid you're going to start asking me other questions. But anyways, so at this time, I'd like to call Sheriff John Mox and Captain Laura Van Meuser. I never get her last name right, but we know who she is. So they're going to talk to her on presentation, a radio replacement project. And this is just, uh, talking about, this doesn't mean that we're going to do it or whatever. It's just a presentation at this time. Okay, so we're trying to make this, uh, very brief and, um, based in very simple terms, uh, just so we give you a little bit of historical perspective. Uh, we built our radio system in twenty thirteen. There was a ten-year window or ten-year lifespan of the radios. We were told that ten years ago, and this is the replacement of the radios. The infrastructure is still good and, uh, we have a maintenance agreement that keeps it all up to date. But in order to stay up to date, we need to upgrade the radios as well.
So I have a clicker today, so I'll be looking at it. Uh, Cass, Cassie, Cassie's been doing fast. So the sheriff just basically hit the first two slides and two sentences. So we're going to go through them super quick and we'll see. Forget that, that's okay. All right. So I'll just talk while she's clicking. So the simplest terms for the history of us and that we have infrastructure in place that we built in Winnebago County between eleven, twelve and thirteen. Winnebago County spent almost eleven million dollars ten, eleven, twelve years ago to get all of that up and, and ready to go. At that time, like the sheriff said, we knew that the radios would have an approximate ten-year lifespan. The vendor says seven, but we've been pretty good, we've had pretty good luck with ten years historically with Winnebago County. So we're at ten years and it's time. So this project itself, um, is, was initially part of the C I P plan. There was some discussion back and forth with, um, the county executive, finance office, where the funding will be, where it's going to go. This is why this particular project is not included in the C I P plan that you'll hear about later tonight, that the, um, administration director has already presented. So this is just sort of separate. Uh, one of the things that was mentioned was how the yeah, look, go ahead, sorry. Yeah, so, um, one of the things that we talked about earlier, the sheriff mentioned earlier is that, uh, we invested about eleven million dollars. Turn it was about five million dollars in radio infrastructure, another five and a half million dollars in subscriber units, which are these radios that you hold in your hand, radios that you put inside vehicles. At that time, ten years ago, eleven, twelve years ago, it was, uh, there was a federal narrow branding mandate that forced the county's hand rather quickly and unexpectedly. And at that time, the Winnebago County agreed to purchase radios for all the police and fire agencies in Winnebago County as a one-time purchase at that time. Go ahead. Thank you. So we have, you skipped one. If you can go back one, that's okay. That's, that's a baby all over the place. So, um, the next page, go ahead and skip, skip to the next one. We'll just keep going. It's all right. So when I talk about infrastructure, this is what's in the basement of our building right here. This is millions of dollars worth of equipment that dispatches all the public safety agencies in Winnebago County. We have a lot of money and it's all motor products or motor powered endorsed products. Next sentence. You recall, two years ago, we had a C I P project that replaced the micro waves in Winnebago County. Um, we invested three hundred and thirty thousand dollars to replace that key infrastructure. And we did it through our local vendor, Baycom. And, uh, the same quote from the same equipment to motor roller tractor was one point two million. But we, we was able to, Baycom was able to do it for us for three hundred and thirty thousand because of the relationship that we have with our source provider. Next. So I, we talked a little bit about the narrow branding mandate that first essentially forced all public safeties hands around two thousand and eleven. And then we did that and we entered into a thirty-year agreement with I D U County. As such, we share a structure and a core system with I D U County that we will continue to maintain through twenty thirty-one. As the sheriff mentioned, we had a four-year maintenance agreement currently with our existing equipment. And they were, were able to keep all the equipment up to date. The other piece that hasn't been replaced or that needs to be replaced again are the small handheld radios as well as the radios that are installed inside of vehicles. Next please. So this is what we own today in Winnebago County. And when I say Winnebago County, I mean all the departments that are governed in Winnebago County. So that's facilities, that's highway, the bureau's office, of course, the sheriff's office, the medical examiner and the health department. So those are the departments with the Winnebago County that the sheriff's office is coordinating this purchase for. We are doing it out of ease and convenience for the departments. I've had contact with all the department heads involved and they all agree it makes sense for us to do it as one purchase instead of six or seven separate contracts between all those department heads for the same exact product and the same exact radios. So we have even those that we have to replace. Those are the vehicles, vehicle well-mounted radios, three hundred and twenty-five porters and then twelve other additional components that are some extra pieces that we need to do. Again, it says a seven years, we're at year ten and that's where we expect. Go ahead, next please. If you're looking for a specific breakdown of which department needs to buy what and how much each one costs, that's the high-level overview of what they look like. Again, there's different styles of radios that we buy for different departments, the sheriff's office, we, I was right, right over. We are much tougher on our radios than state facilities or VA's office. We, um, ours are much more organized by design and they last longer by design because of what we do to them or what we have done to them in the past out in the field. So they do cost more and that's just the way it is. That's the way the place in those. So these, these prices that are up here are based upon a quote that, uh, we got in April of twenty-two. But hopefully that it's not going to go up again. It went up pretty significantly in the last year. Next please. Uh, additional cost besides the actual radios themselves that have to be replaced. There's programming associated with each one. We have to buy about four hundred and twenty total. We have to install the mobiles and all the vehicles, which is a cost. The accessories cost money, the bricks, the chargers cost money. Everything costs money, right? Everything is pieced together separately. The things that we aren't buying, we're not going to replace, we're not going to replace the cases that come with these. I can take it separate. There's a lot of different shapes and styles of cases. We're not going to buy new ones. We're going to have to use old ones. We're now buying extra batteries. Departments are going to have to buy their own. So we tried to really kill down this, uh, proposal to be the absolute bare minimum of what we need to function. Next please. So we, yeah, we have to buy four hundred and twenty-two for the county departments. If you look back in time, you'll see in the C I P book from twenty to twenty-five and twenty-six, it listed seven hundred thousand a year, which turns times three years, two point one million. This proposal is not two point one million. This prices have gone up since that time. We're closer to two and a half million now. And we, when we started planning this back in, um, the fall of twenty-one, between the fall of twenty-one and the spring of twenty-two, it increased over three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I have no idea what it's going to look like for the, in the next year. I hope so that we get this done in this year and it doesn't go up again. Part of that, part of that, um, business is that it's, uh, we have to trade in these old ones and they're going to give us a cost back for some of the old ones. The radios actually be ripe so that everybody else can use them. I know there had been some talk about perhaps fire departments had an interest in purchasing some of the old ones that we might get rid of. They can if they want to, but they use a different radio if the fire departments have, um, and don't quote me on this because I'm not a firefighter, but they have some sort of anti-static grounding feature built into them that they want in their radios for when they go to the fires that we don't have in our radios. So I don't know that they'd actually be interested in buying ours because of the spark hazard. So next page. Excellent. It was the big number. So the purchase price is closer to a half million. Um, we had talked with the finance director that would be appropriate contingency to add onto the top as, as is common with C I P projects who suggest a ten percent, which makes it over two point seven. I don't think we only shot ten percent. Um, I'm hopeful that it wouldn't be ten percent. I haven't, I'm hopeful that it's really close to this dollar amount. But we started narrowing down with the departments which, who needed what, and I thought this was going to be approved by our, our funding back in January, when that meeting changed course. I had met down with the highway department and the facilities department exactly who needs what one, so that I was prepared to order essentially the next day. And I'm confident that those two point four seven seven is very, very close. As soon as prices haven't gone up again, I don't go up before we actually place this right there. Uh, next does. And just so, just to be clear, that we uh, do, we did consider alternatives. We did look at pieces of equipment. Again, we, a reminder that we selected motor in two thousand and eleven on purpose, and with, with purpose, knowing that it was gonna be a thirty million dollar project. We know that the infrastructure is, we know how the equipment works. In the last several years, we have had opportunities to have other radars from different vendors to give interest for free on grants, trial bases, different things, and we can all unequivocally say that nothing looks like these radios that we have here today. And it's just something that we can't jeopardize. Next. And one thing that if you ask me, I'll tell you that they are pushing the newest and biggest radio. What we are replacing or what we are purchasing is not the newest and greatest. It is a replacement for what we have now. It is an existing, like, for like similar products. The newest and greatest radio is much more like a smartphone, and it costs a thousand dollars more per year. And it comes with a month of service fee like your cellphone. So seventy-five mil, seventy-five dollars a month per device, for the length of the device. That's nine thousand dollars extra, so you're essentially doubling the price of a radio to pay for it over ten years. We didn't think that was viable. We didn't think that was a proven solution, so we immediately discarded that. For as many times as Mary has tried to talk to us about it, we absolutely said, that's not what Winnebago County needs right now, and that's not what we wanna do. Perhaps in ten years, if the technology is definitely, we might consider it and use it for replacement of them. We may as well be here, so maybe we had it off, I mean, we will be here in ten years, but we won't be. So um, if that's something that the county wants to look at again, so double the price. Certainly, we can definitely talk about that, but that is not what we wanna do now. The proprietary features on how these radios work is um, very, very intensive, and we know exactly how they work, and we know that, we know what we're buying, who we need to buy, what we're buying. So just that last one, please. So again, just a quick, uh, quick recap, that this has gone up two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the last year. Um, and we also hope for that if we can get this move forward quickly, the open funds or CIP bonding, that's gonna be up to the finance department, the administration department to decide what's the best re- recommendation for that, and let you guys decide how you'd like to find it. That's, you know, perfectly within your purview. We just know that, we know that there's a reset, and we're not sure how long that reset's gonna take. And we'd like to see this move further, that is sooner than waiting for that, so. If that's it, the last one is just, we haven't any questions about anything, so.
Supervisor Paulus.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Um, thank you, Captain Van Meuser. Just one quick question. I hope this is quick. The millions of dollars worth of equipment and electronics that we have in the basement, um, how secure is that from flooding or water damage? Cause um, you said some of those, those, yeah, those pieces of storage stuff, thank you.
So it's, it's, this is probably bad, but it's on a special building. We've been in that building for twenty years. I've never seen water damage ever in that building. We've had some significant flooding in Ashgash in the last twenty years, so.
Supervisor Hanson.
Thank you, Captain. Not really a question, just thank you for the presentation. Thank you very much for your attention to detail on the research.
Thank you. Supervisor Gabbard.
Quick questions. Um, great presentation. You always do a good job. Can we get a copy of that? Cause I don't have a copy of that.
Sure.
And lifetime of the radars?
Again, the vendor would tell you seven years, but we were planning for ten.
And. Maintenance, is that over and above the two point four?
Yes, and we have a, we've had a current maintenance agreement with our current ones. These are here. We have a maintenance agreement with them right now. It's about twenty-five thousand dollars a year for all the county radios. It, it fluctuates year to year because there's, we have to touch them with the vendor every other year, so we try to flatten it out over two years. And two-year contract increments, and it averages about twenty-five thousand a year.
So the, the downside of this is not long, longevity, but it's seventy-seven years.
I, I'm sorry.
Replacing radios over seven years?
It's, we go for ten, right? So these are ten, these are ten, this is a ten-year. We, we installed these in two thousand and twelve and thirteen. Okay, so we're at ten years. The prior system was ten years prior to that, and that, that I think was ten years prior to that. We've been pretty successful with ten-year increments, and we're all, we're all those radios. That's what their business.
And with the. I think we get the radios, you've mentioned facilities and health. Do they have them right now?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so same amounts? Um, slight number changes.
Okay.
Yeah, and the highway department, actually, they have several cordless like this right now, and a few motors installed in their vehicles. And they're basically flip-flopping their numbers. They want more installed in their vehicles and less handheld. So plow operators and the tow truck drivers don't have as much to fit on this. It's a lot more stationary for them.
Makes sense. Thank you very much.
Supervisor Twine. My favorite is Chairman. Uh, thank, thank you, Captain. Uh, so these units are about sixty-five hundred per, right?
The values on the style of radio, but yes.
Yeah, okay. And uh, significantly, the last ten years, we had about three thousand in units, so we got that seven point six percent per year inflation rate on the cost of these units. Inflation, you know, in the last couple of years, closer than high, but you know, um. Before that, it wasn't so high, so the justification of annual increase in cost, um, can you make it?
Can I make a justification? The best I can say is that the last year, the economy has probably had a glass of everybody in this room.
It's hard to get a real handle on what the cost's gonna be by the time this is done, and that's your story on what's on it.
That's true. I have no idea how much more the cost is gonna go up, but I know historically, there wasn't a huge price jump.
Okay.
And the, the, the price jump occurred in the last year. The last four or five years, it was pretty flat.
And these many other units, uh, obviously it's a run-on company. Are they made in the United States?
I am sorry, I don't know that.
Okay, they are smart features that are secure?
These, these, these radios that we are buying do not have smart features. Correct. Those are the ones that cost the bulk of it, that we're not buying.
And the old units you said could be uh, salvaged.
Pieces.
Where the salvage, where the.
So it depends on how many we sell and of what type. If there's a buyer for them, they estimate, I gave them rough numbers on what we would be selling. They're estimating it's about seventy thousand dollars total, so it's four hundred radios.
So you'd probably wanna sell them all at once, but you can't maybe action into a general pack, I would imagine.
That's correct. We can't, cause they're, they're, they have transmitting capabilities, so we'd have to be very clear and specific on where they go.
Right, okay.
We transmit, we have roughly one point seven million transmission a year on these in the county, so we're definitely serious about our system.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Gabbard. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I thank you for the presentation, and thank you for keeping it brief. I just have one question. I'm the last person who was, I was gonna sit here and suggest spending more money. Was the thought ever given to possibly getting one for the sheriff, or one for the sheriff, and say you were of the new upgraded model, to see how that would work over the next ten years? So that if the prices do come down, you would have a working knowledge of what those would be?
Oh, actually, we had not considered that, but I would consider it as we got closer to repurchasing them. So I think the system is just based on a solid style of the technology. I'd wanna, I'd wanna give it a fair assessment.
Exactly, and that, I was just, it was just, it would be an opportunity possibly to not base, you know, spend all the money on something you're unsure of. If there was something you could do the same, maybe have one or two possibilities that you had a grasp of it. So if there was down the road, you would know which way you're going forward, and maybe like you said, the prices come way down on it.
I'd be happy to add an extra high dollar for you, absolutely.
And I guess the only last person who's been sitting.
I do have an old subject that's all about two weeks ago, so I'm not spending your money, my money.
Thank you. Sir, Supervisor Nelson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Captain. Um, if you appreciate that you went through it very quickly, but I'd like it if you could just back up. Some of the, I don't know, was it in the tennis system or something that Motor World, Motor World quoted you one and a half million, and you got it done for three hundred and thirty thousand?
Yes.
That doesn't give me a real, real fuzzy feeling from Motor World.
Yeah, so that's about the labor, and that's a really solid point. So Motor World, there's, there's certain pieces I've listed that are, was been nationwide contracting. The radio, the, the cost of the radios themselves aren't going to change. It's a nationwide contract. But the labor is something that Motor World would charge us more for, because we have a solid relationship with our vendor locally. They've, will give us a different flat fee, and we know that we save money with them instead of going to, taking the easy route and going with Motor World and signing one big contract with them. That would be certainly easier for us to do. We're not going to. We're gonna take the cost effects of pieces that we know we can get because we have a relationship with our vendors.
Thank you, sir. Supervisor, let's go.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for that presentation, Captain. I was just um, interested in that seventy thousand for the forty, four hundred radios or thirty radios? Four hun, you had mentioned the salvage.
Oh, yes, yeah.
Four hundred, yeah, about four hundred, yeah. Okay, so, and I, um, the, the firefighters who would not be going in the fires and, and, you know, throughout the municipalities and people of those, and people of EMTs, so I've heard a lot of times with issues and personal phones, you know, the volunteer. And then township road crews. I mean, is that something that could be looked at a little closer?
Um, sure, it could be. Um, the, so the fire departments that are in Winnebago County, they're EMTs, they're all together, right? So that would be up to those fire chiefs if they wanted to buy ten-year products. I mean, absolutely, we could talk about that with some of them. I know that some of them are very invested in what their towns are going to do, and they have a very good plan, or at least discussion points on what they want. I, I don't know if they wanna invest in ten-year technology, or maybe, I think, you know, I think, I gotta speak for all of them, but I really feel like most of them want the replacement as well. They know for ten years that their radios were going to expire too.
Yeah, I, I guess I would, oh, go ahead.
No, I was, I was just gonna say that, um. There are, there are, um, the, within Winnebago County, the city of Ashgash Fire Department, the city of Ashgash Police Department, Mina Fire, Mina National Fire, Mina Police Department, the National Police Department, and Alma Police Department have all already replaced theirs. They've all done it in the last year or so.
Okay.
So really, the only local municipalities in Winnebago County that I left are really the township fire departments, and they are still trying to figure out what they have been doing lately.
Yeah, and I can see I moved that already. I apologize. Maybe I could talk with you about that later, to about, maybe, yeah, thank you so much. Yeah, thank you.
Supervisor Bender.
I guess my concern is, I'm really happy to supply the radios to the sheriff's department every seven years, but I, I can't believe I worked at the highway department. I have to use that radio for my super communication, so probably seventy-five percent I use myself for the climate supervisor, because I didn't want the long conversation over the radio, where, you know, the comm center records everything, and we're talking about. Probably we're adding, we're not, you know. So it's like, we use this app a lot. I would just think that if we, that we radios for the sheriff's department every seven years, and thirty relatives into the facility for the highway department, with the air purifier, the parks, and the facilities. They're not like in gas situations. If my radio didn't work at the highway department, a lot of times the battery would die. See, they do. I, I, I didn't deal for my ladder for, you know, there was no way gear I had to set for.
Yeah, that's a good point. You're making up the batteries. So the, the ones that they actually wanted, the highway department, are the ones that are installed permanently in the vehicles, where there's no batteries. They're attached to the vehicles. And I talked to um, Bob Damon at the highway department, and he explained that the ones that would go into the plows and the trucks are the ones that he wants, because his guys aren't gonna be fiddling around with this piece of equipment, just like a cellphone. That's the last thing he wants, are plow operators on a cellphone driving around in that, right? So he said, I really wanna switch to those motor that are mounted, where the guys know they can grab the, the microphone that's sitting there, like a trucker CB. They know exactly where that is, and that's, that's what he wants for his, and that's why we switched out the other a little bit.
We have, we've learned about these, where they've replaced the radios and replaced the equipment.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if we let it replace, you know, if we had a hundred pieces of equipment, we would replace a hundred radios.
It was so just like that.
But now it's like, we're gonna spend almost two hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year, you know, that's what it costs for a four hundred and twenty radios. And for you, it could be a life in that situation. To that track, I mean, like I have the airport, it's not a life in that situation. You know, if his radio, if, okay, he just gets the cellphone, and pulls everyone aside and runs and makes a phone call, you know, it, it's, it's not. I will support the radios for the sheriff's department, but I don't believe that I can support the radios for weather fair entities. I think it's way too much money for the taxpayers, and we can fuck with those radios then, that you're gonna be getting rid of. As many radios were bad, they can just take one of the radios from the sheriff's department and use that. You can take the feature off. I know you have a spare one, but but if you lose that radio, you can basically shut that radio down right from the outset. Because, you know, so those radios are usable in the highway and the facilities, and we could get new radios every seven years. And thirty years into that, any four departments, so you'd get radios three years sooner. And that department, the radio could be just fine. I mean, all these state departments aren't gonna have any radios. They don't have, you know, a hundred thousand dollars or, you know. They, they can't, they're a front truck without raising their taxes, and they're gonna learn, getting the learning to, to buy the radio. So I, I just think that, that the four hundred and twenty radios that were in support of it, I could spare radios for the sheriff's department.
What, what you had mentioned though about replacing the radio with a piece of equipment, that's prior to narrowbanding. This prior to a lot of things that have changed since you've worked for the highway department. So please understand that technology has changed, and the rules by FCC have changed, so it, it's not the same.
If you get a new radio and a new truck, that, that changes. Basically, if, the highway department got twenty-five radio equipped trucks, and as they got new trucks, they put a radio in, that would change.
Well, if you're changing the truck every ten years, that would work, that math works.
Well, most of the trucks last, the, the dump truck last worked in ten years.
What I'm saying is with the new technology, that doesn't, that doesn't work. That was prior to narrowbanding. The radios and the new FCC regulations that occurred in twenty thirteen, what we had to do, what we had to do with the new robust system that was purchased. So things have changed, is what I'm trying to say is, you can't use the analogy from back when you worked, cause it doesn't, it's not the same.
I, I used those radios for two years.
Okay, I, I understand that, but again, things have changed.
And those same leaders are still in the trucks today.
Right.
And it's fair, right? In terms of basically fair, it could be a day, it could be ten years.
You're exactly right, but, and, and again, that's up to the department head to decide, and that's what we, we went to them and said, what do you need?
It's up to them, what you say, but it's up to us to fund it.
You, you, you're exactly right. So if you decide that you're not gonna fund the other departments, that's your decision to make. Correct. Thank you. Okay, having no other ones, we thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
And then we'll be going to resolution number one seventy-five oh two two oh two three. We'll do zoning, I'm sorry, we'll do zoning first. I apologize. First one is report number one, when he gave me, in town of Clayton, Supervisor Miller.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I recommend uh, the adoption of, of the uh, report number two. It's um, for the um. Number one, sorry, I'm on the wrong. Yep. Um, for the uh, planning and zoning of the uh, Winnegamey Incorporated. Uh, it's on uh, east center roads. And it's tax parcel zero zero, zero zero six, one two four six, zero zero six, one two four five, zero zero six, one two four four, and zero zero six, one two four three. And we have a, we've got a second by frame already. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Not hearing any, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Or say nay, carry. Mandatory ordinance number oh two oh oh one twenty-three, we're zoning from R two to R one, tax parcel numbers oh oh six, twelve forty-three, oh oh six, twelve forty-four, oh oh six, twelve forty-five, and oh oh six, twelve forty-six. Supervisor Miller.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I recommend the approval of uh, this resolution for those tax parcels mentioned. And we have a second by frame. Any discussion?
Any discussion? Not seeing any, all in favor, signify by saying aye. There's a poll say nay. Carried. Report number two, Winnebago County General Code, Chapter twenty-four, Whitman Regional Airport Zoning, Supervisor Hens.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I recommend acceptance of report number zero zero two.
Where is, first made and seconded. Any discussion? Any discussion, any discussion, not hearing any, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Suppose say nay, carried. Mandatory ordinance number oh two oh oh two twenty-three, you feel, and recreate Chapter twenty-four, Whitman Regional Airport Ordinance, Supervisor Hens.
You're going to approve a venture ordinance number zero two slash zero zero two slash two three.
First made and seconded. Any discussion, any discussion, not seeing any, all in favor, signify by saying aye. There's a poll say nay, carried. Mandatory ordinance number oh two oh oh three twenty-three, Town of Clayton, on behalf of Paul and Joel Moran, whose own tax parcel numbers oh oh six oh six fifty-two and oh three oh one and oh oh six oh six five two oh three oh two from A two to R two, Supervisor Youngquist.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I move for the approval of mandatory ordinance number zero two slash zero zero three slash two three.
And that is seconded by Supervisor Farley. Any discussion? Not seeing any discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. There's a poll say nay. Carried. Keeping up? Okay. Uh, mandatory ordinance number oh two, oh oh four twenty-three, Town of Clayton, on behalf of Brett Beckham, Reson Tax Parcel oh oh six oh eight sixteen oh one oh three and oh oh six oh eight one six dash oh one dash oh two from A two to R one, Supervisor Miller. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of this resolution. It's seconded by forum. All those in favor signify by saying aye. There's a nay, carried. Mandatory ordinance number oh two oh oh five twenty-three, Town of Clayton, on behalf of Kevin and Jenna Fisher, whose own tax parcel number oh oh six oh two seven nine oh one from A two to R one, Supervisor Miller. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of this resolution. Seconded by Supervisor Harrison. For Hanson, I'm sorry. Not seeing any, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Say nay, carried. Mister's mandatory ordinance oh two oh oh six twenty-three, Town of Clayton, on behalf of the Town of Clayton, whose own tax parcel oh oh six dash oh three two eight dash oh three from A two to I one, Supervisor Youngquist.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of mandatory ordinance number zero two dash zero zero six dash two three.
Seconded by Supervisor Powers. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Suppose say nay, carried. Mandatory ordinance number oh two oh oh seven twenty-three, Town of Clayton, on behalf of Town of Clayton, whose own tax parcel number oh oh six dash oh three four oh dash oh two dash oh one from A two to I one, Supervisor Youngquist.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of mandatory ordinance number zero two slash zero zero seven slash two three.
Seconded by Supervisor Powers. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Say nay, carried. Mandatory ordinance number oh two oh oh eight twenty-three, Town of Clayton, on behalf of Cody Hobel, whose own tax parcel number oh oh six dash oh oh three four dash oh one from R one to R two, Supervisor Youngquist.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I move for approval for mandatory ordinance number zero two slash zero zero eight slash two three.
Before we vote on this, I've got a call on Chairman of the Planning and Zoning Supervisor Hens.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, as a matter of housekeeping, um, we need to change this resolution so it reads the property be changed from the classification of R one and R two. And then at the end of it, to the zone district of R one. They flipped that in there, if you, if you actually look at the petition that's in here on the second to last page, they're requesting to remove the R two zoning completely from this property.
Just to, just to, just go to R one then?
Just to R one.
Okay. Supervisor Youngquist, do you still make that motion?
Yes.
Seconded by Supervisor Powers. All those in favor signify by saying aye. There's a poll say nay. Carried. Now, whoever had consent agendas, that's something to take care of right there, possibly. If they can be pulled out. Okay, next is resolution ordinance, our first one will be one seventy-five. And that is because I thought Judge Jorgensen was still going to be here and he's in charge of bailiffs, but he had to leave. Adding the bailiff position to the Winnebago County unclassified position pay schedule, resolution one seventy-five oh twenty-two oh twenty-three, Supervisor Stafford. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, I move for the approval at resolution one seven five dash zero two two zero two three. Seconded by Supervisor Hanson. All those in favor signify by saying aye. There's a poll say nay. Carried. And we'll go to I ninety, uh, one ninety-four. Jumping around here, but. No, we're going to one ninety-four now. Resolution number one ninety-four oh twenty-two oh twenty-three, approval of capital improvement projects for twenty twenty-three to be funds funded with transfers from the undesigned general fund balance, which will either reduce the undesigned general fund balance or will be reimbursed by substantial bond issue, Supervisor Cox. Supervisor Cox. It's one ninety-four, it's the last one. I move for that solution, uh, pro- approval of the capital improvement projects for twenty twenty-three to be funded with transfers from the assigned general fund balance, which will either reduce, reducing the assigned general fund balance. That will be reimbursed by a subsequent bond issue. I don't hear any seconds, but I got a lot of lights on. Thanks, Chairman Farley.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Second. There's a second, oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
So the motion's on the floor.
I didn't see it, I'm sorry. The motion's on the floor.
The motion is on the floor.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to move for division of the question. Uh, this is an incidental motion.
Do you have a second?
Three seconds.
Do you have a second? So, there's a motion on the floor for the division of it.
Yes.
Let's have it. Okay. So that has to move over on, right, Mary Ann?
Yes, it does, it is a non-rankable motion, a proposed motion to amend, but a division of the question does require a second and, uh, no debate, can be amended and will require to be addressed.
Jordan. I might have it somewhere after it's been decided, please.
Okay. Motion, Supervisor Hanson? We can't debate that, we can't debate it, so. Patient, I, this is a new thing for me, just tell me what this is doing, doing. In other words, what they've asked to, instead of voting on them all at once, go back and vote on each one separately. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. It's whichever one he wants to pull out, so if he wants to pull one of them, instead of doing all of them at once. The capital projects here that we presented. This big book of all of them. All the capital projects. So. Supervisor Powers, do you have anything not for debate?
Not for debate, uh, no, no, it's not, it's not for debate, because this was read out loud, it said, Supervisor Cox said transfers from the assigned general fund and reduce the assigned general fund. And the statement actually reads transfers from the unassigned general fund and reduce the unassigned general fund. So which one are we voting on this?
So, the approval of capital improvement projects for twenty twenty-three to be funded with transfers to the unassigned general fund balance, which which will either reduce the unassigned general fund balance or will be reimbursed by a subsequent bond issue.
Thank you.
May I have a question, Supervisor Gabbard, I'm sorry.
So here's a question, and I don't have to check the, the, of the corporate council. So with that motion being on the floor, is it an individual item that can be posed? Or is it, I, I'm sorry, I live in this. Can it be just one item, two? Or is it involving voting on each individual item on this resolution?
No, one item could be posed.
Just one?
Correct. Now, as I was telling Chairman Farley, the division of the question is a non-ranking motion, as opposed to, let's say someone wanted to do a motion to amend, to delete something, one of, one of the projects. That, as you know, is a subsidiary motion, but it is this, this divide the question is an incidental motion, it's non-ranking. But in response to your question, uh, it can be, one item can be removed from the group.
And then they know that. Yes. Okay, thank you.
And then it's on draft, then somebody else could do the same thing, correct? Say he chose one out, but then somebody else wants something else, they can do the same thing, right?
That's correct.
Supervisor Farley, let's back to you.
Uh, I, before I announce what I'd like to do, I need this approved on the floor.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Suppose say nay. That is Chairman Farley.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, the purpose of this was to follow a parliamentary procedure, rub it through overboard. At this time, I'd like to refer to Supervisor Bender for the disposition of, uh, what he is going to bring forward specific to UW Fox.
So Supervisor, you called for it, but Supervisor Bender's going to.
He's actually going to detail what he needs to pull.
Okay. Okay. That's why I thought it was going to be two separate ones, so, okay. Because I didn't turn it on yet, I was still thinking about it. I got to get this, Drew, that, can you take that off? How's that?
Oh, yeah. I'd like to make an amendment to resolution one ninety-five zero two twenty twenty-three pertaining to the approval of the capital improvement projects for two thousand twenty-three by removing lines forty-nine and fifty from the resolution. Reducing the amount in line twenty-three to eight million one hundred and ten thousand three hundred and eighty-two dollars. Reducing the line twenty-four to nine million five hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Nine million five hundred and eighty-seven thousand one hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Reducing the amount of line sixty-three to nine million five hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars, one hundred and thirty-eight and one million four hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars, seven hundred and fifty-six respectively. And reducing the amount in line sixty-four to eight million one hundred and ten thousand three hundred and eighty-two dollars.
Motion made and seconded.
We talked about the category earlier, when the company backed it up there, we just, you know, that we had more time to basically think of it, or, or back, uh, utilities that they need to come forward, a lot of matters, you know, the, the, the engineering. And the design work done before this.
Supervisor Swan. Supervisor Swan was first, you have delayed on, I'll just, I'll pause it for the second. Supervisor Hens. Mr. Bender, when you were going through it, you said line sixty-three and sixty-four, uh, mine, line sixty-three is empty. So I return, is, is this supposed to be sixty-four and sixty-five? And what we have done, I, I just want to clear, it's a point of clarification.
Well, based on your conversations with me and what you wanted, you're correct, I made a mistake, it's line sixty-four, not line sixty-three. And so it would be reducing the amount in line, in line sixty-four to nine million five hundred and eighty-seven thousand one hundred and thirty-eight dollars and one million four hundred and seventy-six thousand seven hundred and fifty-six dollars respectively. And reducing the amount in line sixty-five to eight million one hundred and ten thousand three hundred and eighty-two dollars. So the amounts are correct, but the line should be sixty-four and sixty-five, not sixty-three and sixty-four.
Supervisor Hanson?
I think I just, I may retract, I, I just want to clarify, we are pulling line forty-nine and fifty, so it is only the food service project of UW that's being pulled, is that correct?
Okay. Supervisor Powers. That was my question to you, food service, thank you. Okay, not seeing any other lights. I have to vote on the amendment first. Correct, Mary Ann, or can we take that once? We have to vote on the amendment, right, and how you're better. Okay. You better do it to board on your machines, just to make sure. All in favor of the amendment, push a, if you're against it, push nay. And that passed. Okay, let's taking that out. If someone else says anything, we'd be Supervisor Gabbard.
So, now we're back to the resolution, was that all, right?
Correct.
Okay, so now I have a money question for Mike. What is the amount, or close to the amount that we have today? And, um, it says assigned or designated general fund balance that we have right now.
Uh, twenty-seven million dollars.
Okay, and that being said. If we took all of these out of the general, uh, assigned funds or whatever you want to call them, the name changes. And take it out, we'd be down roughly eight million something, right? So then we would be at nineteen million.
Perfect.
Okay, so the roughly becomes important to me because I believe our bonding agent said we should be in that twelve to fourteen million. Is that correct? To get bond rating? How often we go before, if we take it up, if we took all these projects that have now, uh, be first, and we took it out of undesignedated funds of twenty-seven million, and that drops to nineteen million, are we at any point getting close to a number where it affects our bond rating when we go to bond?
Well, we can't say for sure what's going to affect our bond rating because they won't tell us ahead of time. But our policy about, about the undesignedated fund balance requires it to be in a range of sixteen to twenty percent for ongoing expenditures, annual expenditures. So I can do a little bit of math in my head. The so I recall from that analysis, I can do more detail, but it would take me a few, a little while. That the twenty percent, the upper end of that range, our target range, puts something like thirty-two million. So already below that, I'm pretty sure if we do as you suggest and just take the eight million out right now, it will put us theoretically below the sixteen percent. Uh, I'm not completely sure how much, I could do a little math and figure that out. But we wouldn't make that decision under this resolution at the present time. In other words, this resolution does not commit the county to borrowing the money. What we do is after we have, so you know the factor is, there may be something else subtracted to, subtracted from or added to the unassigned general fund balance, once we look at the 2022 financial performance. And see if departments understand our response, how it comes out in the wash. Uh, so there'll probably be something put back in, but looking at the numbers, it may not be, I'm not really expecting as big a number as we've had in another recent years. So I'd like to do that analysis more carefully before we decide, and that's why we write it the way we do. We then wait until our audited financial statements are complete. Do that analysis according to the fund balance policy, and then we may buy the eight million, we may not buy the eight million. So this last year, we only had six million, before that, we had four million and so forth. We'll certainly do that, but there will be two more resolutions needed from the board before we actually borrow any more.
So I trust you're mad on this because I know you've been down this road before. So we are firmly open to either undesignedated fund balance or bonding. That's all I need to know. Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, but I am watching that number because I know that that does affect our bond, that's right. Okay, good. Thank you.
Supervisor Gavin. Sorry, Mr. Chair. Um, I, um, I would be voting against this one simply because I think it is time for we detach themselves from the UW Fox campus system, simply because I would rather have them be granted more autonomy in regards to the projects and that they're able to, to fund their own specific projects without waiting on funds and waiting on county approval. And there's other, even the Wisconsin colleges and universities out there that do not, so however long county funded. They do very well. So.
Hey, not seeing any other lights. We'll be voting then on resolution number 194 or 22 or 23 with that money taken out for the kitchen part of it. So unless there's anything else, if you're in favor of doing that, the rest of that, if you're not, vote nay. That passes thirty-one, three, one. All right. So we're back to the beginning here now. The next resolution number thirty-five, oh, four, twenty, twenty-two. Create an ad hoc structure review committee, rest call committee. And there was change to task force to review committee structure in Winnebago County, beginning with the 2024 term supervisor staffer. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am moved to approve Resolution 35 dash zero four, two, zero, two, two. Seven of my firm. Supervisor Stone.
Yes, um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So regarding this resolution, um, I just want to remind, uh, the body that we're not, this is not impacting us, this term. Um, we're to look, it's to help us look forward, not where, just not where we're at today. Um, I, I support this and am behind this because I feel like, just looking at the best way to get our work done. Um, it's, it's not, it's not, this is not asking you to approve. It's just asking you to, um, look at, uh, to support that, that we can look at this, um, issue and try to identify what makes the most sense for us. Thank you.
Supervisor Graham. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I just kind of want to check quick about how this got back here from Supervisor's House's resolution last year. This started out as a resolution, then it went over to the Judiciary Committee. It was referred. Uh, and then from there, we kind of sat on it for a little bit, and then we had one presentation by the Wisconsin Counties Association. Jay Curtis from the Tennessee Board came up here and gave us a presentation on committee rightsizing. Uh, and then recently, we decided to move into action with this. The goal was to get some form of proposal done before the end of this term, preferably before budget of this term of this year. Uh, and given that the JPS committee has a lot on its plate already, uh, we decided to branch off into a different direction with this ad hoc task force. So, uh, I've been talking with other counties. Tomorrow, I'll be talking with Fond du Lac County Board Chairman Stephen Ebert about his committee structure and how he runs his county board and multiple other counties in our region as well. And kind of looking at what the best model is for ourselves. And for this task force, uh, if it's passed tonight, I would encourage as much public input as possible, as much input from this body as possible. And there are a lot of different expertise skill boxes here with people who are on different committees and that they bring to the table. So I would encourage this to be voted on tonight. We can get started and roll up our sleeves. And I want to thank everybody who, who worked on this to get this here. So thank you.
First Chairman Fari.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Kind of a point of, uh, determination here. When we're elected, we set the rules for this body for this term. Uh, I'm not sure it's proper to suggest, as the resolution clearly states, that this would be a beginning in the 2024 term. You could have all new supervisors and certainly a whole new judicial committee. So, uh, I, I think it would be more proper if you did a task force to make a recommendation to this body during this term perhaps. But as that stood, I, I can't support that. I don't believe that's correct. Thank you.
Supervisor Hanson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I'm going to support this and I echo what Supervisor Frame said, but I also take into account what Supervisor Fari said. Because for me, I will always invite discussion and encourage discussion because that means that there can be a change, there should be a change, or it gets left alone. And I think that's an important discussion to have.
Supervisor Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, Supervisor Fai kind of answered my question. I'm hoping to this, but and what I don't get, I don't get when this, um, task force, we report back to us. So that's a little bit too open. I mean, he suggested Supervisor Fai would come back into the budget time, but it's not still about. I wish things just didn't, but it would come back, uh, December, twenty twenty-three or something so that, you know, people could talk about this and maybe really be part of the campaign next year. People raise their hands up. So I guess that's what I'm looking for. Would any, um, decision, any idea of a putting, running, this would be definitely coming back to the board. That's my question.
The only thing I can ask is that they want to get it started, from what I understand, I'm looking at Chairman Fari.
I get that, Mr. Chairman, but I am not proud of looking at it. I mean, I suggested a long time ago, but, but, you know, and Mr. Chairman, you kind of suggested this, well, if he wants to do that, maybe by that time. Well, then why don't we put a date, December of twenty twenty-four, or November of twenty twenty, I'm sorry, twenty twenty-three? But I don't get that. I mean, I'd be open to that. I don't want to suggest that because I probably could shut down. But I wish that they have a date set aside, definitely set, that lets me report. That gives them a timing and a start. I'm not for that, but I do get the way it's going to come to end, and that's what I'd like to see.
Supervisor Gavin.
Two points. You are going to appoint people to the
This, this task force, I will, yes.
And then another point is, and, and, uh, I think it was mentioned already tonight, don't forget about people that have been on the board for that. Because we're sitting here thinking, we might have some good ideas about this too. So if I don't do it on the headwreck side, I hope to be on this task force. I think we need to clean those. Having served on some committees and seeing how some of those actors, I think we could clean hats a little bit. I think we need a drastic change, but we should step that out of it. And this task force is going to do is review ours and present something. Remember, the task force isn't going to say, this should be done, and this should be done. So go ahead and open mind and come up with some good ideas. Thank you.
I would just like to add to that, there's only going to be five on this. So if you don't get put on, the meetings are always open. So make sure and come. Uh, I don't know, I imagine it'll be on Zoom. So make sure, because there will only be five on there. Supervisor Challenger.
Mr. Chairman, you created a nice segue for me. My first question is, as a task force, does this, does this meetings, this group's deliberations need to be recorded and presented, uh, presented on Zoom, catalogued on Zoom under our, under our rules?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, my next question is about the scope of this. Is it, is, is this task force limited to looking at committees? Or is the intention to also look at committees, commissions, and boards?
Uh, well, the, the commissions are appointed by the county executive. So I don't know if they're going to do that or not. So I don't know if they have any thought on it or, um. No.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We actually had a fair amount of conversation about that specific thing at committee. And this is focused on committees. So this wouldn't include boards, you know, many boards are required to have. And then as, um, Chair Egan had mentioned, the commission's scope because of how they're playing as well. So this would certainly be, at least this effort, it'd be certainly looking at committees issued by this board.
Can you say a little bit more about that normalization? Why commissions were excluded? I mean, I understand that they are not with this board or, or, you know, sort of the origination of them, and obviously some are statutorily required in certain, certain ways. But to, to sort of say, we're going to take part of the structure and review it and leave this other part undone. And I, I guess I'm specifically asking because in line eight, it references, uh, it references a couple of boards. Uh, and, and generally, the, the, the flow of this conversation has often been mixed with both the commissions, committees, and, and boards. Thank you. Uh, yes, so there's a few ways I can answer that. The first is, um, as we look at this resolution that came to our committee, you know, this didn't originate from us. We first had to divorce the two, right? So the one that has is the background, that's where that is, the resolutions, the actual meat. And so when we first had this conversation, we had a lesson with what is the scope here? And we elected the bottom with just the committees, because that is what the resolution said. Then we had a conversation on, okay, do we add it? And that's where we got into, you know, there are a lot of tentacles, if you will, when you start including some of those other initiatives. And felt like it might be too much for a small, uh, task force of five people to really do. And the bigger, more broad opportunity for efficiency is within the committees themselves and how we do that work. Um, and we haven't missed control of that since those are managed by this assembly. Um, so that's why we ended up there. Now, on, on a side, we think there is opportunity there. There is, absolutely. Where opportunities come up, as we, as this is talked about, I'm sure there will be, and I'm sure that will be documented. But as, uh, as we're still there, um, these are recommendations for this board. So, um, you know, that could be a recommendation for something down the road as well, for sure. So I, I would say that, um, if a good idea comes up as a result of this discussion that's beyond the scope of committee, I would encourage that, um, task force to document that. They'll bring that forward, um, either as on the side or maybe a separate initiative that this board will consider in the future.
Supervisor Grant.
Just to clarify, and I'm sure you all know this, Supervisor, it's not one of your committees are under the domain of Chairman Egan. Commissions and boards are under the domain of, of county executive domain. And you know that when Supervisor Astora initially brought this, she had referenced the word committee. And then the judiciary committee decided it wanted to change that word committee and replace it with task force. But given the fact that again, it was committed, that is why Chairman Egan would have the power to appoint who would be on that committee.
Same sort of spot I've made, just to clarify, um, task force. So the reason why the committee decided to change it to task force, some of it was a little confusing. Having a committee set us to look at committees, but also to focus on, on, this is a really short-term effort. And sometimes when we establish committees, they kind of live on, right? And this was really about focusing on what is the best solution going forward for this county in terms of how we can serve each other as well as those that we represent. So that's why we went with task force to really reinforce the true nature of this effort.
And, and again, if you actually look at the mission of the judiciary committee, it specifically says, review policies and advise and recommend appropriate policy goals. And that is exactly what the judicial, judiciary committee is doing. You referenced, or someone referenced twenty twenty-four. Well, when there is a new board, the new board could say, you know what, we don't like this. But right now, judiciary is honoring its goals in terms of trying to be true to the rules.
Great. Thank you. That's all really helpful. I think you're interesting to see, you know, a total, uh, new, uh, certain I think you're interesting to see, you know, a total, you know, certain circle of this. Also suggested by nineteen eighteen, we're committing that to, to task force.
So I can make a motion if we need to, but maybe we can just do that as a.
Amendment, I don't think. Thanks.
Thank you.
Supervisor Harton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree it is reasonable to review the Winnebago County committee's structure. However, from certain business service on this Winnebago County Board, I know that any token with the committees needs to be prefaced with a downsizing of the county board. However, inasmuch as I have sounded out the Judiciary Committee, a majority member showed interest in downsizing the board. And I have sounded out the county board in April of two thousand twenty two. And few supervisors were interested. I accept the rule of the majority. The last time committee structure, board structure was written up was two thousand and seven with the personnel function review committee. In two thousand and two, a task force, nineteen ninety one, a community task force in nineteen eighty seven, a contractor, a consultant. So this is something we do, we get a rich every so often. And I guess it's starting to scratch.
Supervisor Stafford. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to cut the comments, since I've actually had a chance to speak already, I just want to mimic that I would encourage involvement from everyone, for sure. Regardless of who is on this committee, onto on this task force. I would absolutely encourage that those who have been with it for years and have that experience as well, so those who have been in move. I, I think that the more conversation we can have, the better we're going to be. So I would absolutely encourage that. Please do that and I'll kind of say this really delicately. I would plead for those who have been on the board for many years to come with an open mind on that and not be stuck in how we've done things. And then I would also ask those who are new to appreciate history and understand that we've done things a certain way because of a good reason, and we should ask what that reason is. But if the reason is, it's just how we've done things, that's really, that's not a good reason. But there might be really good reasons. And I think if we can come to the table with that kind of thinking, we're going to have some fantastic recommendations to bring forward. So, thank you.
Supervisor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think two points, and I'm a little bit worried about this. If, if speaking at a cake and punch farewell last week with Corp Council and the chairman, I said, well, what, what committees would you think about, are thinking about getting together? And I said, well, for instance, and this is, so again, this is not cut and stone. This is just like, you know, conversation or a take. For instance, Parks and Rec going to buy with U W Education, Central Agriculture, which have two very distinct focus, the focus. Part, I mean, Parks and Rec is all about those who are, I think they mentioned Parks and Land and Water, that's what it was, Land and Water and Parks. Land and Water is dealing with fishermen, fisheries, dairy farms, forestry, farming, whereas Parks is looking at recreation, boating, picnicking, camping, fishing, which is different from fisheries. And I don't see how the two have the same focus at all. And my second question about this would be, if you were, and also most, most of our committees, not all, most of our committees are are representing departments that we already have. So if you combine committees, would you then be also kind of combined departments? And if you do combine Land and Water Committee and the Parks and Recreation Committee, would be, would it then become either a board or a commission? And we're trying to get rid of committees and make everything boards and commissions. Is this a backwards, a backdoor of turning committees into commissions and boards? It's like, those are my two questions.
Supervisor Hens. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say, and I do, because I've discussed with a lot of the people who've been involved with this about, about something like this since I was appointed. And I think that the opportunity to especially pick the brains of other counties and see what they've done and see how things have worked for them, see how things haven't worked for them. Maybe we might run into this, because I know, and I'm just throwing this out there because I know this has been talked about, that people have not been there with this and people are bad for this. So combining Highland and the airport. And that might not work in one of these counties because we have a different kind of an effort than other counties do. But then again, it might, you know, we might find out that, you know, combining those work to create a seven surrounding counties. We don't know. And we, that's the thing, we don't know. This committee, I think, is going to give us those kind of answers. Give us that kind of information so we can move forward and say, that's best for Winnebago County. Even if it works for another county, it might not work for us. And I think those discussions will be very vigorous in these meetings, especially if we had participated for those of us who aren't on that task force. Thank you.
All those in favor, resolution number thirty five oh four, twenty twenty two, to create an ad hoc structure, review task force, review committee structure in Winnebago County with a twenty four term, signify by saying aye. Or say nay. We'll vote, but I'm quite sure the ayes have it. Vote on your machines. That passed twenty five, seven, three. Resolution number one, five, four, twelve, twenty twenty two, to name the county administration building, the David Albrecht Administration Building. Supervisor Buck.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move for approval of resolution number one, five, four, twelve, twenty twenty two.
Seconded by Norton. Seeing the discussion now, oops, Supervisor Eisen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. From two thousand and six to two thousand and eighteen, I served under the paternity leadership of David Albrecht as chairman of the Winnebago County Board of Supervisors. He got the job done with his fancy humor and appreciated all the hard work his board of supervisors did. He had already written, that is very active in Winnebago County, Wisconsin, Wisconsin County Association of Business, Paper and Trade Company, B and the Board of Directors of the W C O. His most tangible contribution was the initiative to go to lab board computers, which had become standard operating procedure for this county board of supervisors. For this and all the others that have spread out in the resolution, I ask for your favor to commemorate that service by naming the administration building the David Albrecht Administration Building.
Supervisor Norton. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to be, all respect to Supervisor Albrecht. I have no problem naming something after him. For all assurance, that was true, Supervisor Eisen said it. I guess what I'm finding out here, suggestion is, is the administration building the most appropriate building. I suggest to some of the important, I would suggest maybe the Harley building. As far as I've been on the county board, he's been on the county board with me. I think he hired when I hired him. I've been chairing for many years. I think the most appropriate building to be named after David Albrecht, Supervisor David Albrecht, would be the Harley building. Because he's, that's one of the two things I think I am most associated with him being with. So I probably should put these ideas, but I think the most and more appropriate thing would be the Harley building. If I see since and soon that we may be doing, in the near or the long, Harley building in the near future. That's my thoughts. I'm a, I'm a subject.
So second. Supervisor Hanson.
I did not have the pleasure of working with or really knowing Supervisor Albrecht, but I want to thank Supervisor Eisen for putting this forward. I think that's, that's admirable.
Supervisor Gabbert.
Hey, this is Picky, but how about a middle immersion? If you're going to name it after somebody as, as good as David Albrecht, let that be middle immersion, isn't that clever? Any objections to that?
I don't think so. Nice, Chairman Farnum. Let me thank Mr. Norton for bringing up that perhaps a very plausible option here. Mr. Albrecht, I might ask you the question, if you had to choose between the two buildings, which would you prefer? So the motion, one, five, four, twenty, twelve, twenty twenty two, to name the David, to name the county administration building with David W. Albrecht Administration Building. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Say nay. Carried. Congratulations. Resolution number one, seven, six, oh, twenty two, twenty three, commendation for Tim Lauren, Supervisor Cox. I want to dig it out. I'd like to make a motion for resolution one, seven, six, zero, two, twenty twenty three, for commendation for Tim Lauren. Motion made and seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. It's a nay, carried. Resolution number one, seven, seven, oh, twenty two, oh, twenty three, commendation for Robert Messerschmidt, Supervisor Cox. I'd like to make the motion to accept resolution one, seven, seven, zero, two, twenty twenty three, commendation for Robert Messerschmidt. Seconded by Supervisor Hanson. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Say nay, carried. Resolution number one, seventy, oh, twenty two, oh, two, three, commendation for Barbara Efforts. How's it going? Thirty, thirty. Supervisor Cox. I'd like to make a motion to accept the resolution one, seven, eight, zero, two, twenty twenty three, commendation for Barbara Everse. Everse's daughter, motion was made and seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Say nay, carried. Resolution number one, seven, nine, oh, twenty two, oh, twenty three, commendation Patricia Paulus, Supervisor Cox. I would like to make a motion to accept the resolution one, seventy nine, zero, two, twenty twenty three for the calculation of Teresa Paulus. Motion made and seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Say nay, carried. Resolution number one, eighty, oh, twenty two, oh, twenty three, commendation for Terry Van Dellen West, Supervisor Cox. I'd like to make a motion for the resolution one, eight, zero, zero, two, twenty twenty three, for commendation of Terry Van Dellen Rush. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Resolution number one, eighty one, oh, twenty two, oh, twenty three, commendation of Carl Bandis and then Supervisor Cox. I'd like to make a motion for the resolution one, eighty one, zero, two, twenty twenty three, for commendation for Carl Bandis Zambon. He's seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Resolution number one, eighty two, oh, twenty two, oh, twenty three, commendation for Kelly Hale, Supervisor Cox. I would like to make a motion for the resolution one, eighty two, zero, two, twenty twenty three for the commendation for Kelly Hale. Seconded by Supervisor Hanson. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. It's a nay, carried. That's something that the consent, consent agenda there again, I do. Right there, we just do add them. That we read earlier in the serial, I'll come to take in as one, if you pass it. Amendment number one, eighty three, oh, twenty two, oh, twenty three, amend Winnebago County General Code, Chapter nineteen point two three, camping and overnight mowing to include the modification and to modify the fees listed within this chapter. Supervisor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I approve of the order three dash oh, two, two, oh, two, three.
Seconded by Flynn. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Resolution number one, eighty four, oh, twenty two, oh, two, three, approved hanging release renewal between Tracy Knox and Winnebago County Supervisor Gabbert. I approve that resolution one, eighty four, oh, two, two, oh, two, three. Motion made and seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. It's carried. Resolution number one, eighty five, oh, twenty two, oh, twenty three, increase the fee to attend the parent education program partners in parenting from ten dollars per parent to twenty dollars per parent. Supervisor Stafford. I think, Mr. Chair, I move for the approval of resolution one, five, zero, two, two, zero, two, three, seconded by Nussbaum. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. It was carried. Resolution number one, eighty six, oh, twenty two, oh, twenty three, establishing a new fee schedule for mediation and custody study fees changed by family court services for setting meditation fees at the existing amount of a hundred and fifty dollars per patient, increasing custody study fees to fifty dollars per hour, increasing the upfront rate, routine, retainer fee payment to a custody study to five hundred and twenty five dollars per parent. Supervisor Stafford. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I approve of the approval of that resolution one, six, dash, zero, two, two, zero, two, three. Seconded by Supervisor Graham. Supervisor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm wondering what the current upfront retail fee is. Is it going up? If it's, it's, it's proposed to go to five twenty five per parent, which is, by my calculations, for a minimum wage employee working, getting a chance to work eight hours a day. That's, that's nine days of, of work to pay for this. What is it currently? Five twenty five sounds steep to me. What is it currently?
Supervisor, I, I approve of the term.
I know just quickly, this is Jennifer, she's the manager for family court services. Sure, sorry about that. She's the manager for family court services. She should be able to answer the questions regarding the the current fees. And she is the manager for me. Jennifer Kurt. Yep. And the current upfront fee is four hundred dollars per parent for the retainer and we go at the rate of forty dollars per hour. So this is an increase of ten dollars per hour. The amount of time that we spend putting into the in-person interviews, the home visits, the review of collateral sources and the writing of the report. Uh, is such that five hundred and twenty five dollars equals roughly half of what a billing would be for an average custody study. I will also note that although we give the parents the retainer for the hundred or the five hundred and twenty five dollars upfront. It does if they can't pay that immediately, it doesn't hold up the study process. We will still commence the study. We have ninety days to complete the study. Um, and if the parents are looking to see if they can have that fee waived, we do allow them to fill out a waiver form and apply for that. Um, and so they can get either half of the fee maxed off or they can qualify for a free waiver of the fee depending on what their income is. Um, there aren't any. There aren't any great past statistics from prior managers in my office, so I don't have that to be able to provide to. I can say that a great majority of our clients do apply for fee waivers for both mediation and studies and that they do qualify for. So they they apply for it and how many what percentage of those people are actually receiving that waiver? Like I said, there are no statistics in my office from prior managers. I've only been in this job for a year.
I I'm just concerned about about custody hearings or custody studies. And making it so steep that there are children left in situations uh that are dangerous to them. And possibly, you know, one other parent, I'm usually thinking of a mother. Um, uh, because if they can't come up with this with this study, this just seems really steep for people who are all ready than crisis.
Well, first of all, my office doesn't screen for safety. That is the Department of Human Services. We are a court mandated and a court ordered um service that just provides a investigation and report to the judge in a family court case. So this is not a safety issue. Uh, we don't remove children. We don't make recommendations for that. This is simply making recommendations to a judge for placement in custody when parents can't figure it out in their contested court case for a divorce or for parents who are never married. In addition, again, their services, if a if a court orders a custody study, they're going to get the custody study whether they'll pay the fee or not. Whether they qualify for a reduced fee or not. That report comes out in ninety to one hundred and twenty days regardless of the fee. And then the parents charged for that, if there's collection action that would take place if they're ordered for the fee that gets done on the back end. So again, the report comes out, it is utilized in the court system, they go through the hearings, so they get the service whether they pay upfront or not. Um, and also I believe the clerk of court's office who does all of the collection would allow a payment plan before it goes into collections. Um, and that is for anybody who doesn't qualify for the waiver, which again can reduce that fee to one half of the amount that we would go finally or to refer over. And keep in mind too, this is not a common thing that happens. Custody studies are ordered in the worst of the worst cases. This is not done just to his parents say, I want to have this. This is after a guardian in my name has typically been involved for a year or more. And the judge has seen these people repetitively in their office and a judge has decided at some point that they need an additional layer of investigation. Because there are so many factors with this family that make it so complicated that it hasn't been able to be resolved.
You're not you're not looking at danger, but you just said to me that this is the worst of the worst of the situations. And so it sounds like these kids could possibly more than likely be in some danger.
The worst of the worst is really a reference to the level of conflict between mom and dad. It doesn't it's not indicative of danger or safety. Like you're I think you're thinking of which is I have to remove this kid from a home because there's abuse and neglect or maltreatment. That is for the Department of Human Services to determine. We are making a recommendation about placement in custody. So the worst of the worst parents are the ones that cannot resolve the placement schedule for their children in a divorce because they are arguing about it.
Okay.
Thanks, Chairman Farley. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate your explanation, but my review of this and I do appreciate the clarification on the old fees. The old fee should always be stated in the ordinance so or in the change, so the board has an idea of what the increase is. However, my review is you're trying to raise fees on individuals or persons who can least afford it. So I share the same concern that Supervisor Powers has raised. Thank you.
So right now, and that is the supervisor's affair because that's the sort of where it could be under the bill. Supervisors, I start.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I appreciate your explanation and I really appreciate your work. Um, thank you, because I do understand as a I'm a trained volunteer mediator. I I help the Winnebago County and Fallinawatt County, and I know for them that smartphones under ten thousand, we give the first three hours for free, yes. But this is I I am familiar with mediators that do this type of work and it's it's amazing what you are able to accomplish. And I know that after those two or three hours in our reservation center structure is two hundred and thirty dollars an hour. So I will be supporting this. Thank you.
Supervisor Hanson. Um, yeah, for Supervisor Farley and for Supervisor Powers, I did bring this up at JPS and we had not only the explanation that you just gave here, but the added. There was a judge there as well that I asked questions to. Um, I understand about the raising of the fee, uh, but. No service would be suspended at any time because of either a lack of ability to pay. Or whether they're funding or excuse me, whether they're asking for a relief program of either fifty percent or all of it. Nothing gets suspended.
In addition, this is not this isn't something that is just assessed to to individuals who are low income. This is anybody that comes into the diverse process regardless of their socioeconomic status when they come in. If they can't resolve the issues because they're too busy arguing with one another. This is the last ditch effort of the court system to get good in-depth and involved information. My files are foot to two feet thick by the time I am done reviewing every aspect of this family from the present to the ten years prior. This is not an easy job and it requires upper level degrees. It requires juggling all kinds of different factors and the personalities of all the family members, not just the parents, step-parents, the children. Other family members like grandparents. So this is not an easy task.
Supervisor Nelson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And that is a one of the worst of the worst who has received some of your help in determining custody in the past. I can attest to the fact that your job is greatly appreciated and puts some common sense into it. It is not typically, my opinion, the ones that can least afford it, it's the ones that can most afford it, but just don't can't figure out how to make something work. And I kind of resent the fact that the taxpayers end up picking up the tab because those two people can't agree to disagree and move on with their lives. So I think everything you're doing is worth that fee increase and more. Thank you.
Supervisor Gavin. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do and I have the sentiments of Supervisor Nelson as well. And we have to keep in mind too that in this, uh, it does state that the last time that we've had, um, that we set of that fee was in two thousand and one. So it's been, you know, a couple of decades here and, you know, we're all looking at what happens with the, uh, with with inflation in regards to, uh, just paying for our county staff. So, um, and that's five twenty five per minute is, um, is actually still considered a loss to the to the county. Because there's a lot of work that's being put in here, um, into that custody study. So, uh, really, we're just, uh, this is just kind of keeping up with, uh, keeping up with inflation, keeping up with the times and just making sure we're trying to be as solvent as we can. And we do have a lot of other existing resources within the county if it gets into, um, issues in regards to child safety. Um, and we also have the Counter Resolution Center as well that handles a lot of that procedure too. So, uh, so just to remind that that custody study is that, uh, it really is a last resort and and when there's a just a very, very lengthy battle between two people. So I I will be supporting this. Thank you.
Supervisor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, just, I don't know, we hear a lot of what's been said, but again, I do want to just reinforce that that man's turned away. That these are about custody battles between two parties. This is not about any sort of child safety. And even at this increase, there's still a significant discount given. Um, we've seen the, uh, cost structures increase. We continue to talk about how we need to pay people more. But yet we don't have a good way to recover some of that increased cost. And the last point is is that a lot of the detail that's been asked, um, was discussed at committee as well as is included in the agenda item list book. Including what the current relevance and the history and all of that. Thank you.
Very well. I just had a comment. Uh, my wife tells people that I've been married so sixty three years. She's never been so reluctant. She moved me, but she looked at me once in a while. All right, resolution number one eighty six oh two two oh two three. Yes, sir. What's matter? Do you have something? I think we better just use our iPads on this, so. We'll use our iPads. Just to make sure. So if you're in favor of resolution number one eight six oh two two oh two three, vote aye. If you're against it, vote nay. It passed thirty two to three. Resolution number one eight seven oh two two oh two three approval of a capital improvement project in the amount of two hundred and thirty thousand dollars for replacement of the Oshkosh Women's Service Building. Public elevator controls and necessary building modifications to be funded with a transfer from unassigned general fund balance, which will either reduce the unassigned general fund balance or will reimburse by a substantial bond Supervisor Buck.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move for approval of resolution number one eight seven zero two twenty two.
It's seconded by Norton. Supervisor Gavin.
This is just a question that was a supervisor back. Do you know, I thought I said this was going to have forbids. Do you have a list going on for this?
Yep. It hasn't. Yeah.
Okay, um, do you have the bills? And is it is it two thirty gonna is it two thirty gonna do it or will you be tempted? Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Norton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Try to we try to follow up in committee, Mike. I mean, Supervisor Buck, when do you think this can be completed? Because this has been, I've been on for quite a long time and I'm very long wanting to get this done. So when do you think it could be finished?
It will be expedited as fast as we can get it. As you've heard numerous times on the board floor here, we're at the mercy of the system. I don't have a good date yet because nobody's committed to buying the parts until we get the money and the funding and the project approved.
Okay, resolution number one eighty seven oh twenty two oh twenty three. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Say Nate carried. Resolution number one eighty oh twenty two oh twenty three approve an extension of ground lease between Cell Core Partnership, DB Verizon Wireless and Winnebago County and Audi Game County Supervisor Buck.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move for approval of resolution number one eight eight zero two twenty two.
Seconded by Ellen Burke. By Ellen Burke. Right, Nussbaum.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. When this came before the PMF, I asked for, uh. The contract for the, if there was liability, I want to make sure that we had that.
Yes.
This was involving an extension of an original contract that went back approximately twenty years, but supervisor, or I should say, uh, uh, Mike Eldy was able to get me the contract. But we were looking at, unless they are indemnification classes, so your insurance question should not be. It's not an issue.
What is the liability?
Basically, um, Verizon agrees to indemnify us from any annual costs, including reasonable returns fees and claims of liability. It's right in the language.
Okay. Uh, this requires a two third, no. Resolution number one eighty oh twenty two oh two three. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Say Nate carried. Resolution number one eight nine oh two two oh two three authorizing purchase of, uh, Purnak Purnak handheld narcotic analyzer and two Purnak solution kits for Sheriff's Department to be funded from corporate abatement account Supervisor Stafford. So thank you, Mr. Chair. I move to approve resolution one eight nine dash zero two two zero two three. And it's seconded by, that's what I said. Supervisor Ford.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to give some credit, uh, here for this process. This started with Supervisor Conley Hanson. I give that a credit to him for giving the bad ruling on this. Uh, doing the research, talking to the stakeholders, the meg unit specifically, the sheriff's department, uh, and doing the research on this and shoveling it through committee. Uh, the credit is all his for this. Uh, this would be a boon to our sheriff's department and rear policing as well. I know that City Manasha has one, Virgin Fox Crossing has one. Uh, the meg unit does, but the sheriff's department does not. Uh, and when we talk about not forgetting about the townships, uh, this is not forgetting about the townships. Uh, we are doing our best here to try to give the sheriff's department a capability that the cities have, uh, that the sheriff's department does not. So I want to thank Supervisor Hanson for putting this together. Uh, and if you have any questions, please direct them to the sheriff. Thank you.
Supervisor Hanson. Thank you. I hope everyone has had a chance to see the the supporting documents for this. I I became concerned because of the overdoses. If you see the coroner's report attached. Um, especially when you see the fentanyl and then when I learned about the Manasha officer that, um, was exposed to fentanyl and need to be given the the Trunark, excuse me, the, um. Narcan doses, I believe it was two doses to revive him. Um, then there was the officer in, um, Florida, in Orlando, Florida, on a traffic stop that had to be given something. And then just very recently in January, eleven officers at one time were exposed and all hospitalized. So I'm hoping that you'll you'll advance this because the sheriff has graciously also agreed that this unit will be moved to the the jail unit so that they can test for safety. As well as as I I maintain that it is also for citizen's safety. Because if you look at the coroner's report and the amount of fentanyl, I don't know if everyone may be aware of just exactly what they have and this unit is going to identify it. Thank you.
I just want to say, Mr. Chairman, sure, how can an officer become exposed to fentanyl in the line of duty like that?
Well, the the Manash officer was at an overdose and, uh, was administering CPR during that. During that, he was exposed to, uh, fentanyl. And that's common, uh, cat, at scenes. We don't know and we have to, um, render aid. And we don't, obviously we can put on protective clothing, but, or, or a mask or gloves, but we can still, if it gets in contact with the skin, it's absorbed, um, and it's, it's very dangerous.
And I guess if you're administering CPR or. Very, very, you know, administering CPR, that would definitely be exposed to.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Seen anyone else? Resolution number one-eight-nine, oh, twenty-two, oh, twenty-three. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Say nay, carried. Resolution number one ninety, oh, twenty-two, oh, twenty-three. Amend county board rule six. Order of business to replace six-point-one, R and E, approval and correction of minutes of the previous meeting with a consent calendar. Supervisors, uh, sever. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I need for the approval of resolution one-nine-zero, zero-two, two-zero, two-three. Seconded by Supervisor Ellen Burke. Supervisor Evans.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I wasn't keeping exact numbers tonight, but just going through our zoning and, and accommodations, which were things that we had discussed that would be on this previously when we talked about this. Um, we had about fifteen to twenty minutes that we spent just reading through the items and then taking the vote for each item. The one thing that would have been to vote by me, which would have been item number zero for the housekeeping, we could have accomplished all of those votes in two votes tonight. And we would have saved ourselves approximately fifteen minutes of our time. So just to put that, put it in perspective, what we're trying to accomplish with, with a consent agenda, consent calendar, that, that's the kind of things that we're doing. We're not trying to do this to sneak things under the radar. We're trying to do it to pick up time where we can because these meetings could get lengthy. Thank you.
Supervisor Evans.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, if, if we have the consent calendar, would we still read those biographical sketches of those people who retired, who were paid for the two-hundred, two-hundred-and-twenty-seven, two-hundred?
Two-sixty.
Two-hundred-and-sixteen, I got two-twenty-seven, two, over two-hundred, two-hundred years of service from those people. And I was, I liked hearing who they were and what they did and remember this. Would we still hear those things and then at the end? So we're gonna, uh, combine all of these of the, to commend all of these. Are we gonna still read the commendations, the, uh, biographical sketches?
As long as I'm doing agenda, yes, they will be doing that. But then on the end, instead of Mr. Cox having to go through them all again, they'll all be combined into one and approved all at once.
I, I would not wanna see that again. Thank you.
Not seeing any other questions. All those, resolution number one ninety, oh, twenty-two, oh, twenty-three. Signify by saying aye. Say nay, carried. Resolution number one-nine-one, oh, twenty-two, oh, two-three. Establish an ad hoc task force on the pre-deum structure of the Winnebago County Board of Supervisors. Supervisor Stafford. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You don't say that gets that page. I need for the approval of resolution one-nine-one, dash, zero-two, two-zero, two-three. Seconded by Gressis. Supervisor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just wondering what the task force is looking at in terms of pre-deum. We just, we just raised our pre-deum a year ago. Um, and I'm just wondering, what is it we're looking, that they have to look at?
You know, I, alls I can say is they're gonna look at it and study it. What they actually wanted to do originally was to put this one and, uh, task force for the committee structure, put them together at one time, but then they decided to leave them separate and do each one separate. Like this one here, it'll have seven members on.
So what do they wanna look at for pre-deums?
Well, you'll have to find out what the task force comes up with, I guess. It'll all have to come back from here. So, uh, because, uh, Supervisor Stafford will be picking the seven, which him and I talked about, but it'll still come back to the full board. Just like if I pick a committee or whatever, it has to come back for the board to, for the approval of the names that are on there. And him and I talked about that earlier, so he has no problem with that. So there'll be seven on that one. And Supervisor Stafford, did you have anything that you wanted to add on that pre-deum? The question that she had asked, what you're gonna be looking for?
You bet. Uh, the first is, again, this is a very similar conversation as we've had with the ad hoc, uh, committee. This is about making sure that the compensation structure is appropriate to, uh, to the, the current environment. And I believe from the conversations within committee, and of course, the, uh, main sponsors will be able to, um, comment on this as well. It was to necessarily, even so that it should necessarily change the specific amount, but maybe it's how it's compensated. Uh, there's a lot of different ways that we can be compensated. We could be compensated like now, which is per deum. It could be, uh, compensated in a monthly manner, on a, uh, like a salary almost. Uh, lots of different ways you can do it by there. And, um, as we continue to look at the right way to structure committee work, um, I think this is a logical, um, additional item to look at to make sure that we, uh, um, are so right sizing the, the way that we structure our compensation. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the idea here was to have these two hand in hand, but given the parliamentary procedure, we couldn't do that at this time. But this resolution stems from the question, how can we better, uh, reflect adequately compensating supervisors for their time while right sizing what we have to pay out? Uh, and so I think this is something that needs to be looked at. We do have something in state law called the Freedom Statute. We have the capability to self-organize. And I know this is something that I've been talking with Supervisor Stafford for a while about. Uh, and this ad hoc task force just takes a look at studying the compensation structure and seeing are there any changes that we may make to better suit the county, especially for going in a different direction with committees. Uh, there may be no changes or maybe some substantial changes. Um, the other thing that I did wanna talk about is the fact that currently there is no, there is no kind of structure as to what a supervisor is obligated, uh, what meetings are obligated to attend to. So in county amendments, uh, the reading of the section for supervisor predeums is a supervisor may claim predeums for a, uh, committee meeting that he or she is obligated to attend to. There is no operative, operational definition of the word obligated. Uh, so the fact is, is that we can have people go to committee meetings who are, are on those committees and they can claim predeums for them. Uh, and that was something that I see as a loophole and I think the county board would be prudent to close. The idea that I had in discussions, uh, preliminary discussions about this was that if we go to a flat base where everybody is compensated for the number of county board meetings that there are at that month, so one or two, and then from there, they can add on the committees that they are assigned to and not the ones that they just go to. Uh, because I know that there are some supervisors that like to go to more committee meetings than they are assigned to and some can only go the ones that they are assigned to go to. Uh, so the way I see this is that how do we accurately reflect the work that people actually put in to show that this is a volunteer position, not a full-time job, uh, while still adequately compensating them for their work? Uh, so this is something where, again, I want, would like everybody to have some robust conversation on if we do decide to move forward with this. I would like especially members of committees who meet frequently, like planning and zoning. I would like a lot of the best input and discussion from them. Supervisors that have been here for longer versus supervisors that just showed up last day or even earlier or even later. Uh, so the idea behind this is studying, how can we right size? How can we close some loopholes? How can we serve some fans where so adequately compensating supervisors for the work that they do? Uh, and so this is not a pairers. This is not something that I would ever consider to be appropriate if it was a pairers. This is just right sizing and looking at that and seeing where can we kind of trim some of the fat as it stands within the loopholes, uh, and within the, uh, the current outlet of the committee structure. And if that changes, you're willing to adjust this as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can you tell me why you decided to let the judiciary chairman pick the members? Not you, because just like the task force, if this isn't gonna deal with the whole county board, why are you not picking the county members? Okay, um, I was. Well, okay, this one, I'm gonna move to, um, running thirty-two, and strike chairman of the Judiciary Public Safety Committee and same, having same chairman of the county board.
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm up. My apologies. Was my chance to speak? Oh, no, I'm sorry, not on the amendment.
Any answers on the amendment?
Uh, no, it's not on the amendment, sir.
Madam Amendment.
Yeah. By the Harvard Amendment.
Yes, I believe that the head of the chairman should have a right to make those decisions.
So, there's the way sent this at, um, county board chairman for the, uh, twenty, the, the seven, so on that task force. All those in favor, if you're part of saying aye? Aye. Don't say nay? Nay. Carried. Back on. Okay. Okay, back on resolution one-ninety-one, oh, twenty-two, oh, two-three.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I would just add one more time that this is something that aims to study, can we save the county staff time? Can we save the taxpayers' money? Uh, and can we save supervisors' time in filling out their pre-deum sheets? This is more of an efficiency maneuver, uh, for our resources and our time. And it's just exploratory, same as the committee structure. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I would also like to, uh, put in a resolution to, uh, make an adjustment to line twenty, uh, where it says the, of the seven supervisors appointed. Uh, I would, I would like to change that to four supervisors and three, three citizens. I think that it would be good to have an outside. I hear we are making rules for ourselves on this. And I, I would like to have the, the citizens, the citizens are the ones that are paying for it. And might, the citizens might wind up being past, past supervisors or something like that. But I would make a motion that we change that from seven supervisors to four supervisors and three citizen members. Thank you.
Yes, on the amendment, I, I, I really hear, uh, uh, the amendment to understand it. Um, the only thing I'm worried about is on the citizen appointment for this one, there may not be the involvement. Um, so I don't think I'll support that one.
Thank you, Chairman. Um, also, not just that, but, um, Hanson just said that, um, with the time constraints also, because this has to be done fairly quickly because, um, if you notice on the, sorry, I can't pull that up and talk at the same time. But, um, if you notice on the resolution that it has an end date, and, um, this is something that we're trying to accomplish or have some sort of, um, recommendation for the board prior to the election. So if we're looking at, um, also finding people in the community, it might take longer also. And it kind of needs to be done prior to the election, but we do have an end date, I think, of April twenty-four.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I agree with some of the sentiment that, um, we all have the timing, but also that setting, uh, precedence that, uh, what, what supervisory wise is that we're gonna, we're gonna set our own salaries, that we could just, it doesn't pass a smart test. I think at the very least, we should try to involve, uh, the citizens of the county in this endeavor. And if it doesn't work this term, then maybe we move to a different, uh, choice. So I will be supporting this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanna say that when I went up for election, I had no idea that I was gonna be paid for doing this. It felt to me that it was a responsibility as a citizen of the, of the county of Winnebago that I do this. I'm concerned that if we ask citizens to be involved, they're gonna sit there and say, what are you doing paying yourselves? Thank you.
Yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, I've got a thing of, uh, uh, and that point of amendment is if you're going to affect a, uh, supervisor's, uh, income, salary effect, you have to get it done before they take out the papers for the next election. So somewhere in the, you're gonna have to make a fairly amendment, uh, have it, have it done by November thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three. Otherwise, uh, there's no chance for any change to happen, uh, in any way. So anyway, you wanna treat that, uh, that's my point. And maybe what I can do is, uh, I'd like to amend the amendment so that, uh, when we're taking on three, uh, citizen members, uh, we have all of this work then, uh, uh, to be, uh, changes to be effective prior to November thirtieth. Be it further, be it further, uh, resolved, uh, that, uh, all changes, uh, rather than saying that, uh, on November twenty-three, we have further resolved, uh, that the, uh, ad hoc task force report back, uh, for, uh, October, uh, business meeting. October two thousand and twenty-three business meeting. That way, we will be able to, uh, take the information and we'll be able to put it on the agenda and have it considered by the, by the board whether they wanna make any change or even increase to pre-deum.
Yes, do we need to vote on the amendment before, yes, I mean, supervisor license motion? Right, that is, that is, first, 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 first. Put it forward, I want to ask all of the lettering. On where are. By, so, uh, and, uh, citizens. So, yeah, the motion on the floor is. Yeah. Okay, so the motion on the floor is seconded by, uh, we need. For, uh, four supervisors and three citizens. Now we have four. They got, uh, yeah.
Yeah.
So all those in favor, that signify by saying aye? Aye. Don't say nay? Nay. Eight, seven. That's the pass. So, uh, we, you wanted, want something else, supervisor, I can, I can cut down.
Well, I'd like to make a fairly amendment.
Pretty, because, uh, that's the amendment's legal, uh, that, uh, on one, uh, twenty-three, we approve the, uh, the, uh, this, this report, uh,
October first, two thousand and twenty-three. That way, we'll get the information in and we'll be able to have whatever changes is deserved by the body for taking out the petition papers on December first. But someone's got to accept them. Yeah, we put to the board by October first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Appreciate the, just the little sorting out here that supervisor Isaac, I want to ask how that is going to square with lines twenty-one and twenty-two that ask the task force to report its findings and recommendations to the judiciary and public safety committee for consideration. That potentially suggests that the their October first should be, should be transitioned to the October judiciary and public safety committee meeting, state consistent with twenty-one and line twenty-one. Sort of setting this discussion, this, this task force up to report in two places, one of which is time bound, but the one that comes sort of forward in origination doesn't have, doesn't have a time. Ask supervisor Isaac his, his thoughts.
Is this, is this better for you?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, so my question is about the, if the task force is reporting on October first to the county board, that feels inconsistent with lines twenty-one and twenty-two, which asks that task force to, to report its findings and recommendations to judiciary and public safety. So my, my question for you supervisor Isaac is, would you be willing to change your amendment so that the, the, the required report in October is first to the judiciary and public safety committee so that we can start the recommendations on a track that ultimately ends at the board for consideration and implementation before that December first deadline that you referenced?
Yeah. As you said, September first, to the judiciary. So that if your judiciary committee, it's the first Monday, the first Monday in September is Labor Day. So it's going to be the second Monday, second Monday may be too close to the date of the county board meeting. So I would, I would ask for the Corporation Council to work with it so that we can accomplish what you had pointed out, which is consistent with the resolution and the, the legal aspect of being able to put in and change in first because of what the state statutes say.
So, to make sure that I am following your intent supervisor Isaac, if we were to say, starting on line twenty, we have further resolved that this ad hoc task force will consist of seven supervisors appointed by the chairman of the county board and will report its findings and recommendations to the judiciary and public safety committee in September twenty twenty-three and followed by a report to the Winnebago County Board of Supervisors in October twenty twenty-three. Does that mesh with what you want?
That will accomplish, that will give us an extra cushion time to consider any other questions that would come up and, citizens commenting in the gathering.
Is that the motion?
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you, Federation Council.
Sure. Starting in line, on line twenty, we have further resolved that this, this ad hoc task force will consist of seven supervisors appointed by the chairman of the Winnebago County Board and will report its findings and recommendations to the judiciary and public safety committee in September twenty-three and report to the, report its findings and recommendations to the Winnebago County Board of Supervisors in October twenty twenty-three.
Okay, I want to make sure I'm talking in mics, so supervisors definitely can hear me. I think I have a clue out of this, I have a clue that I moved next to it. I have a clue out of this with a lot less words, nothing. Take it line twenty-three, be it further resolved that this ad hoc task force will present its final report by and automatically disband on November first, two thousand and twenty-three. Covers all of everything you're trying to do right now with just that one change in the line. I'm asking him if he's, if you would accept that as a family, because it's accomplishing everything you wanted with it. Because this, the, the, the way this, the way this would read, the way this would read, that one more time just rapidly gets it. Be it further resolved that this ad hoc task force will present its final report by and automatically disband on November first, two thousand and twenty-three. That's it. That's the change.
Present its final report to which group?
Well, it's supposed to, there's. According to this, they're supposed to report to GPS, am I, am I wrong on that? That it will come here from GPS, so it presents, they're finally going to put to GPS, as it's, as it would be written down here, so we're not changing any of that. And that it will come here from GPS, and it will still get in, in time for, to meet the November thirty deadline.
So then present its final report to the Winnebago County Board of Supervisors, but yeah, October twenty twenty-three. Is that right?
No, there was none of the others changes that were about it, I was just changing one line, I was asking him if he was a model to that, because it covers what he's trying to do, because if they present their final report to GPS, which is who they are required to, report to in here, that would be done prior to November, prior to November first, which means it would come to the next board meeting, or so they would do that in October, to the GPS. And it would come to our meeting in November, which would cover the meeting being, before November thirtieth. And therefore, we don't have to have all that work within all those dates, and that we're just making it very clear. I'm actually trying to make this more simple.
May I ask supervisor, could you please read from line twenty, what you propose?
From line twenty, okay. Be it further resolved that this ad hoc task force will consist of seven supervisors appointed by the chairman of the county board.
Of the county board, yeah.
And we will report its findings and recommendations to the judiciary and public safety committee for consideration. And be it further resolved that this ad hoc task force will present its final report by and automatically disband on November first, two thousand and twenty-three. So they will be presenting the report to GPS as stated in line twenty-two. And GPS would then deal with that report in October, because that's when the meeting will be, because it won't be meeting in November, because it's November first. And then the meeting coming from GPS to the county board would be in November.
So what is the date you're putting, when you said presented its final report by?
I'm replacing April first with November first, two thousand and twenty-three.
Can you, again, read line twenty-three?
Would it be easier if I came up there and showed you?
No, why don't you just say it? No, I didn't, I, it didn't make sense to me. Say it again, please.
Be it further resolved that this ad hoc task force will present its final report by and automatically disband on November first, two thousand and twenty-three.
Okay, okay.
GPS as stated in line twenty-two. And I'm offering this as a family, because I think you understand that. Actually, it's not. You're the one who's coming out with dates, and I'm trying to remove the dates.
Vice Chairman, fine.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Proceed, though, we have a motion by Mr. Isaac in a second.
By supervisor Powers, well, I was offering it as a family, and he declined it, so I'm.
Supervisor Powers, did you have anything?
I was only going to say, I guess I thought that once we, once we changed who was appointed the seven supervisors from judiciary to the chairman of the Winnebago County Board, that there was no reason to, to send all this stuff back to judiciary, but this ad, ad hoc task force being, being appointed by county board chairman would then report back to the Winnebago County Board Chairman. How did you, how come GPS is still, still getting in the, getting in the loop of all this? They presented it as a, as a possibility, but you, you are applying the supervisors, they should report back to you, shouldn't they?
Well, I can say that they will report back to me, that, that they will still, they're going to meet as a, as a committee, I'm going to say JP. They're going to meet as that, and whoever them seven are in there, they will talk it over and put it together, just like the, where the other task force, those task forces are coming through GPS.
True. And can I just point out, there are county board rules that talk about predeem, and the rules are within the jurisdiction of judiciary, so that's how judiciary is gotten involved.
Okay, supervisor Nussbaum.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is this a friendly amendment? Okay, I call a question.
Okay. Questions and calls. Okay, do you all know what the motion is? All right, okay. So a motion has been made for calling the question. We have a second? Question made in a second. All of the favor signifiably saying aye?
Aye.
Don't say nay?
Nay.
Guys have it.
I'm going to let you know that I do not have the words exactly, I might lean towards my numbers to the side of me. Yes, please.
Public council is going to read exactly that, it was.
Let's see if this sounds right. Again, on line twenty of resolution one ninety-one oh two, two oh two three, we have further resolved that this ad hoc task force will consist of seven supervisors appointed by the chairman of the Winnebago County Board of Supervisors and will report its findings and recommendations to the judiciary and public safety committee in September twenty twenty-three and report to the Winnebago County Board of Supervisors in October twenty twenty-three. And be it further resolved that this ad hoc task force will automatically disband on November first, two thousand and twenty-three?
Yeah, that's your motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Don't say nay?
Nay.
Aloud by a machine. Guys have it, but my, my keeps on, my ears are going, so. Okay, with aye if you're in favor of it, nay if you're not. S twenty-eight to seven. Resolution number one nine two oh two two oh twenty-three, authorizing Winnebago County. Yes, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, yes. I apologize. So excited. Okay, we'll go back to resolution number one ninety-one oh twenty-two oh twenty-three. Establish an ad hoc task force on predeem structure of the Winnebago County Board of Supervisors. You all, that was in the amendment, so all those in favor, oops, supervisor Nussbaum. Call a question. All of the favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Say nay?
Nay.
Okay. Now, resolution one nine. Okay, resolution, that I thought I got it. Resolution number one nine one oh two two oh two three, establish an ad hoc task force on the predeem structure of the Winnebago County Board of Supervisors. All of the favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Don't say nay?
Nay.
Okay. Resolution number one nine two oh two two oh two three, authorizing Winnebago County to enter into a settlement agreement with Timber Pharmaceutical Industries, LTD, and Regent Finance LLC, Walgreen Company, Walmart Inc., CVC Health Corporation, and CDC Pharmacy Inc., agreed to the terms of, they're into the MOU allocation settlement proceeds and authorized entry into the MOU, it's a general, attorney general. I'm going to let corporate counsel speak on this if she wants, because this is why we had to have the amendment sent out. In layman's terms.
I'll do my best. So, the day after the county board packet was sent out, we received this packet from National Council. We had been waiting for it, I was reaching out, because we were told that there was a deadline of March to go through this. So what does this involve? As you know, we have been involved with opioid legislation. Starting in twenty seventeen, lawsuits targeted three groups, manufacturers, distributors, and retail chain pharmacies. And as you all know, a prior board voted to enter this, this litigation, and there was a settlement. Well, now there is a new settlement, and it is with Allergen, Tiva, CVS, Walmart. But now there is a new settlement, and it is with Allergen, Tiva, CVS, Walmart, and Walgreens. In terms of the manufacturers, and that's Allergen and Tiva. Allergen is, the proposal is paying two point three seven billion dollars to be paid over six years. Tiva to pay four point two five billion dollars to be paid over fourteen years. In terms of the pharmacies, Walgreen to pay five point seven billion dollars over fifteen years. CVS to pay five billion dollars over ten years. And Walmart to pay three point one billion dollars over five years. So adding all of that up, it's close to fifty billion dollars, but just don't think it's coming to Winnebago County. This is a national settlement. But there's another important piece is that there is also non-monetary release. Um, Tiva and Allergen have agreed to strict limitations on their marketing. Their promotions, their sale, and their distributions of opioids. Including a ban on lobbying and promotion. Rewarding or disciplining employees based on volume of opioid sales they've made. Um, Walmart, CVS, and Walgreens, the pharmacies, are required to implement changes in how they handle the opioids uh, in terms of compliance structures. So basically, what we have here are all of these documents. And um, I know it's, it's pretty thick, but essentially, like the first settlement, um, all of the counties are being approached with this. The greater participation level, the more money that can come into Wisconsin. So we are asking you in the resolution to basically authorize the county to enter into these settlement agreements. Um, and agree to the terms of addendums and, and, and a memorandum of understanding regarding allocating of settlement proceeds. You will see in the packet that there is an allocation of proceeds amongst local governments. That allocation was from the first settlement with Johnson and Johnson and the Big Three. And in that, uh, the number referenced was that Winnebago County would be entitled to an allocation share as two point one seven six percent. Um, the attorneys are saying we can expect that percentage to be similar through these settlements. Um, but again, they'll have a better idea once we hear all of the other counties and how many counties are being involved. But this is all of the material I got. I have to thank Chairman Stafford and Chairman Cox for allowing me to go to Personnel and Finance and Judiciary with the material we had. Um, but again, it's evolving. And literally, we received this the day after the county board packets were sent out. So that's what this is about. Bottom line is, um, you can vote yea or nay. If you say yes, then there's a potential for a payout. If you folks decide no, then there is no potential. Um, but again, that's what this is in a nutshell.
Thank you. Supervisor Cox, you want to introduce it? You're on.
I would like to move a resolution authorizing Winnebago County to enter into a settlement agreement with Tiva Pharmaceutical Industries, Winnebago, Allen Finance LLC, Walgreen Company, Walmart Incorporated, CBS Health Corporation, and CBS Pharmacy Incorporated. Agreeing to the terms of the addendum to the MOU allocating settlement proceeds and authorize entry into the MOU with the Attorney General. This resolution is one nine two zero two twenty twenty three amended.
Seconded by Supervisor Ellenberger. Supervisor Eisen.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to share with the board my summary sketch of what this is all about. There's a big part of money out there, uh, I think maybe fifty billion dollars. And the lawyers get twenty five percent of it. Winnebago County's share would be estimated to be between one point five and three point one million dollars. At which, uh, our proceeds, twenty percent were there to the attorney's fees. And the rest is history. Whatever we get out of it, it's not going to come from the tax payer's dollar.
Supervisor Nichols.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My questions are for Corporate Counsel. Uh, in the resolution, and they regard the law firm fees in the resolution on lines seventy eight and ninety four. That references twenty five percent. And then on, in lines one twenty four and one twenty seven, it says twenty percent.
And I saw that and asked National Council about it. And the answer was, that's the difference between the contract amount, twenty five percent, and the amount the attorneys are asking to be withheld for the settlement, twenty percent. Because the anticipated payout of the, because of the anticipated payout of the national fund. But in no event will can the fees exceed the contract of twenty five percent.
Okay, and how does that align then with the MOU with Wisconsin local government? I think it was the second one in our packet. On page two, paragraph two, it references the twenty percent again.
Again, they were saying that, um, they are going to have twenty percent withheld for the settlement because of the anticipated payout from the national fund, which would contribute an additional five percent. So that's, that's where, that's where I would ask.
Okay, and then my last question is uh, lines one thirty six through one thirty eight. Be it further resolved that all actions heretofore taken by the Board of Supervisors and other appropriate public officers and agents of Winnebago County with respect to the matters contemplated under this resolution are hereby ratified, confirmed, and approved. In ordinary non-motor routes, can you just put us on notice what those three lines mean so we know exactly what we're voting for?
Sure, because you're voting for entering into the settlement agreement with these various entities, the pharmacies and the manufacturers. And they're agreeing to, um, agreeing to the participation agreements with the, um, with the Attorney General, um, and that's basically what it is. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Not seeing any other questions? All those in favor, resolution number one nine two oh two two oh two three, signify by saying aye. Suppose say nay? Carrie. Yes. And we have one exception. Resolution number one nine three oh two two oh twenty three. Approval of a budget transfer in the amount of twenty three thousand dollars from contingency fund for the Government Accounting Standard uh, eighty seven lease for twenty twenty two audit. Supervisor Cox.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to move the resolution approval of a budget transfer in the amount of twenty three thousand, twenty three thousand dollars from the contingency fund for the ASB Government Accounts Accounting Standards Board, eighty seven leases for the twenty twenty two audit. That resolution number is one nine three zero two twenty twenty three. That's seconded by Supervisor Van. Thank you. Supervisor Eisen.
That's it, Mr. Chairman. There appears to be a conflict between what's said in the, uh, the amount in the resolution and the amount in the agenda item in the third. If you look at the rest in the agenda item in the third, it said thirty five thousand for twenty twenty two. And in the resolution, it says the amount of twenty three thousand for twenty twenty two. Which one is it? Fifteen thousand thirty three?
I would recite it on yeah, Director Finance Kaiser.
You're going to get the last move.
On agenda items, this one is passed last month at the board meeting. This one is sort of transferred wages for CIA. So the agenda item, so that we, um, Gatsby eighty seven leases is not attached here. So however this is put together, it was put together wrong. So it was twenty three thousand dollars. The fifteen, the fifteen thousand was passed last month in a resolution for CIA.
Supervisor Nichols.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is the twenty three thousand a one-time expense or is this a, um, program with an annual subscription fee?
This is a software that is a year fee if we choose to continue using it. That is every summer that I think people do that. Ask for the right numbers to get them to look at those CPAs and their levels of that through the hundred and fifty three leases files to get them category heads for eighty seven leases. And the head was then made at the tenth, so they're ready for the audit. And that is come in and set. That only goes up to forty thousand days to get this taken care of. So that's why we're looking ahead to do that. Uh, yearby is going to be a matter of service if we decide to do that for the instead of.
Thank you.
Supervisor Hanson. Yes, a question for Corporate Counsel, and I almost hesitate to bring it up because I just turned the forty five days. Because of Supervisor Eisen catching the difference of this not being a proper exhibit, does that mean we cannot technically vote on this? Because the exhibit is not, the proper exhibit is not attached.
The gist of the resolution presumably has everything with the agenda item report hat. Is that fair to say?
Yes, that's correct.
Because again, um, Director Kaiser prepared the agenda item report. And typically, when we prepare resolutions, they're based on the agenda item report.
Okay, it's, it's not my intention to postpone it unless that would be a discrepancy for housekeeping concerns.
No, because again, it just is in the resolution.
Okay, thank you. Okay, resolution number one nine three oh twenty two oh twenty three. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Who's opposed, say nay? Most maiden, second adjourned. All in favor signify by saying aye. Understood.